Commissioner Mas.
Here.
Commissioner Milfith.
Here.
Commissioner Pa.
Here.
Commissioner Petty.
Here.
I have everyone here. Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
I need to substitute your name on my agenda because I guess Commissioner Kinzer is still here today. So Commissioner Kinzer is our active City Limits Commissioner, who was replaced by Commissioner Thompson. Inactive, too active. Been a long day, it's been a long week.
It's been a long one.
Um, and for your information Chairman, the chatter outside today is Idaho Day for the area's 4th graders. So they are learning about ski heritage in the hallway from Lyle Nelson. And then they will be headed out around the end of the school day. They're also sawing wood cookies in the annex, but that is a sanctioned activity and it's all okay.
Do we have to talk to the arbers to cut a big enough tree down?
No comment.
All right, we have a quorum. So. We were saying Bill was first with taking on the review of the open meeting law.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm going to share my screen here. And it looks like it came up. So I put together a quick slideshow. For everybody, can you see it?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, yeah, Meredith and Michelle asked me to put together a quick presentation on two topics. One is sort of our procedure and quasi judicial process processes. The other is. The Veterans Park Neighborhood Association versus City of Boise recent Supreme Court case that came out. And so. Those are the topics that I'll be taking up today. But I wanted to start with kind of a why are we doing what we're doing? And as I was thinking about it in preparation for my presentation. I. I was reminded of a quote from Stephen R. Covey from The Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, which I read years and years ago, but this has stuck with me. And in the book, in the seventh chapter, it's the seventh habit, he talks about. Sort of a parable of a man cutting a tree. And the quote that I recall most was, I've got on the screen here, I'm too busy sawing. And Stephen's response was, we must never become too busy sawing to take time to sharpen the saw. We are the instruments of our own performance and to be effective, we need to recognize the importance of taking time to regularly sharpen the saw. And so I think that today is what my purpose is. Some of the topics that I'll cover, many of you have heard. Some of you have not. I think it's good even for me, and I go to lots and lots of these kinds of meetings, to sit down and really think about some of the principles that underpin what it is that we do. And so just as I was kind of thinking about getting, about preparing this and what I wanted to say. My first question really to the group, and did my slideshow go away?
No, you're good though.
Okay. My first question to the group is. Why the heck are you on the Planning and Zoning Commission? Have you ever asked yourself that question? Do you not have something better to do with your time, one or two or more days a month? What's your purpose? And I'm not asking that necessarily in a negative way. I'm asking it in sort of a reflective way. Why is it that you, we, I do what we do? Does anybody have any, anything they want to share or just do you want to be reflective about it? Commissioner, it sounded like you had something you want to say.
I don't know, Bill.
Anybody else have anything, any, what's your reasoning? Why did you say yes?
I'd say, I'd say my reasoning. Wanted self-serving, kind of inform myself, a lot of the community, but also to the opportunity arose to be able to. Have an impact, to have a voice. And to maybe, maybe share some of the experiences that I've had out in the world and bring those home to our community.
Bill, this is Tony, that was not a good answer for you. I agree with what was just said here a moment ago. I like to know what's going on in the community and I like to be able to, be able to look at something that's happening in the community and say to myself, that's why it's happening and, and then the circumstance, it's good for the community, or maybe it is good for the community. But just the, the knowledge of having a hand in some of the directions of, of what we do around here as the city of McCall, because the city of McCall is changing. Almost every single month, it seems like to me, something new is coming up, something new is being proposed and this type of thing. So I really, I guess I really like and I really appreciate the fact that I am a commissioner and I really enjoy it. Better answer, I hope.
No, it's a great answer, Tony, thank you. Anybody else want to share?
Yeah, this is Dave, so. I think when I first moved to McCall six years ago, I got on Parks and Rec Committee. And then I got on the LOT Committee and I, you know, I watch, it's like, okay, we have. We can be of service and have an impact in this area and now in this area. But I watched. There's a lot that happens in this commission. And I'm like Tony, I've watched this town for 35 years and. Kind of have an idea of what I'd like to protect or see as far as the town. So. Then I got on the commission and found out that there's all these rules that follow, so it didn't really work that way.
I forgot that part.
Yeah. Anybody else, before I kind of dive in here? Well. What I will say is this. You know, I really appreciate that there's a sense of. A sense of wanting to serve the community. And a sense of value for what you have. I will say that for me, serving as the city attorney for McCall is a source of great pride. It brings a great deal of meaning for me because it is such a special community. In my practice and in my life, I come into contact with many, many people, often who have come here from someplace else. And one of the first things I always say to people is, yeah, but have you been to Valley County? Have you seen McCall? It is paradise. And, and not in the sense that I'm trying to sell the community, but in the sense that you have something so special and it's something that we share. And it's something that we share with visitors and it's something that we share with people who own property in the community. And, and I think we all have a shared sense of wanting to preserve what is good. And, but with a perspective of looking forward to what can be. And so it, with that mindset. I wanted to talk today. About some of the things that we do. And at the Planning and Zoning Commission level. And in land use is realistically one of the most complex things that we can engage in because it's at the intersection of extremely complex and detailed facts. And competing interests of developers, landowners, neighbors, longstanding community members, newcomers, forward-thinking individuals, individuals who want to protect what we have. It's the intersection of state code, it's the intersection of federal law, it's the intersection of constitutional law, the intersection of ethics. And so, and it all comes down to a point. Where your commission makes decisions. And the method by which we make decisions is ever-evolving. And, and it can be quite difficult. And I know even, and I don't want to talk about specifically pending applications, but even listening to our, our most recent deliberations last night, we all wrestle with. How do we, and pardon me, I'm getting over that dang cold that's going around, it's been two weeks and I still might have a coughing fit, so you just have to forgive me. But we. We wrestle with these competing interests and how to make a decision in a way that is effective for our community and is consistent with the rules that apply to us. And we operate in such a complex system of rules that sometimes I get the sense that, you know, we're almost paralyzed because we don't want to do the wrong thing, we don't want to do something that's unlawful. But by the same token, we want, we, we feel like we're compelled to make a decision and we have to balance these interests. And so my intention today is to talk about the topics that you can see on the screen. As a method, and it is not a perfect method. For making those decisions. And so we'll talk about those topics and then we're going to look at the Veterans Park case, which is the most recent instance of the Supreme Court telling us that we all are doing it wrong all the time. And so, so we'll get into that and you'll maybe see why I'm being just a little bit glib. At the outset. I've got across the top of the screen, the word quasi judicial actions. Quasi, quasi, I'm not totally sure how to pronounce it, but it's a, it's a term that the Idaho Supreme Court has come up with. And if anybody has a question about anything, stop me, I'm happy to answer, this can be. I started the way that I did because I wanted this to be a conversation. Recognizing that I probably will be doing a lot of talking. But a quasi judicial action is a class of. Is a class of proceeding that a local government engages in, where you are put into the position of adjudicating the rights and interests and facts applicable to a given issue. And that is in contrast to a legislative action, which is where you create the rules, the ordinances or legislation under which we all operate. And so quasi judicial actions have different rules that apply to them than do, and different rules of decorum that are required than do, than does a legislative action. And some of these apply to both, some of them only to quasi judicial. I'm going to primarily focus on quasi judicial actions because it is by far. The higher barrier, higher bar that we have to meet. So the first thing I wanted to talk about is conflicts of interest. And at its core, what it means is that you can have, you and your household and family members to the second degree can have no economic interest in a decision. And if you do think that you either have or might have a conflict of interest, it's incumbent upon you as a commissioner to raise that ideally prior to the meeting with Meredith, and Meredith will bring it to my attention. Or you can even reach out to me directly, that's what I'm here for. And we can talk about one, whether you have a conflict of interest under the Idaho statutes. And two, what disclosure is required. And so typically, if you do have a conflict of interest, it doesn't require you to be off the commission, but it does mean that you don't participate in that given application or action before the commission. And so as a part of this, I wanted to ask Commissioners. What areas have you seen that you might have a conflict of interest? Do you have questions about what conflicts you might have and how to resolve them?
One that just came up for me recently, because I'm on Parks and Rec as well. And since we flopped, we used to have the in lieu of discussion at Parks and Rec first. And then it would come here and now it's going the other way around, so. Do I have to recuse myself that Parks and Rec? Which isn't really a quasi judicial proceeding, I guess.
It's not, and I mean, do you have a personal economic or pecuniary interest in those decisions about the, the in lieu of fee or the parks requirements?
No.
So I would.
Money for parks that nobody wants to get, but yeah.
And you'll have to forgive me for interrupting, it's over Zoom, it's very difficult to read the room and even harder not to interrupt, so. That's just, I'm going to do it. But I don't think, and I, and I think we had some communication here, based on what I know about that, I don't think you have a conflict of interest. However, I do think that if we end up in a scenario where we're in a quasi judicial process where you have had previous information about a pending application, that might lead us to our third topic here, which is the ex parte contacts and information that you might have received outside of the quasi judicial process and outside of our public hearings. Does anybody else have any, any conflicts of interest that you want to talk about, any questions about this?
One item. If we have a property next to an application, maybe not your personal property, but a property you own, I would say it'd probably be a conflict to be in a part of the meeting and deliberation and discussions. But there's still, or that person would still be allowed to speak in behalf on their, you know, on a public comment section, correct? I know we've kind of talked about this, I'm pretty sure that it would, you know, they'd still have a chance to have their three-minute public say at a public hearing part.
Yeah, so if we're doing like a design review for a development on a neighboring lot to Robert's, Robert's home. I mean, I, I would say. That may not cause you a conflict of interest. We'd have to sit down and think about it because although what happens on your neighbor's lot does impact the value of your lot. In your realtor, you know this probably better than I do, but it's also somewhat remote. And I think we'd want to sit down and really talk that one through, but certainly you could provide your input. As a member of the public in one of those meetings and then we'd have to talk about, you know, your participation in the actual deliberations because McCall is small enough that, you know, although not everybody is right next to everybody else, it's, it's pretty close. I mean, a lot of the, we're going to see it come up where we have, you know, neighboring lots to real estate that, that each of you own. And I think from my perspective, that by itself probably doesn't disqualify you from making a decision. The bigger thing is, it's my second topic here, is can you be unbiased? And I think that, I think that, for example. You know, you, we'd want to disclose in advance that, yeah, I own the neighboring property. And then we'd talk about whether that gives rise to a approximate economic or pecuniary interest that would cause you to have a conflict of interest. I think there's scenarios where it might and scenarios where, where it may not. Any other comments on conflicts of interest?
I think just that they apply to staff as well, so.
That's right.
Bill, I got. Bill, I got one question. I've got a guy that paused my driveway in the winter time, snow paused my driveway in the winter time and he'll come out and he'll, he'll catch me in the yard and he'll ask about four questions about two or three issues that we're going to be reviewing in planning zoning or have been reviewed, or what do you think about that? Or short-term rentals, we should eliminate all of them, or, I mean, it comes out so quick and, and fast. What do you say? Do you say, I can't talk about any of that stuff? Or do I have to come in and mention the fact that I did have a person that I employed to do this, asked me some questions about that or this or whatever? I mean, how far does it relate, really, it's kind of, it's probably a little weird situation, but how far does it really go?
Yeah, Tony, that's a great question and I think what, what you're primarily concerned about is the ex parte contacts and I can jump right back to that. So it, it kind of depends. So by no means is there a rule that says that you can never talk about anything that we're doing at the Planning and Zoning Commission with anyone in the public. I think that if it's an applicant or somebody who has an interest in a pending application, I think, I think I would default to sort of our standard advice, which is this slide. And if it's a pending application that you know that, that's either before the commission or imminently likely to come before the commission. You know, I, I really like what my business partner, Bill Nichols, who is the other city attorney for McCall came up with. And it, and it's this language, you know, I know this is important to you and your information is important to the whole council or commission to hear, please put your comments in writing and if possible, show up to the public hearing so everyone has the benefit of hearing you. I think that's a really, really good, even-handed response. Now, if somebody wants to talk about short-term rentals with you and if they're not talking about a specific pending CUP that's before the commission on a short-term rental, that's just fine and that's good input, right? You want to know what your neighbors and family and friends and other members of the public are thinking about short-term rentals and the, the, all of the positives and negatives that come along with that particular basket of tricks. And so, you know, Tony, with, I mean, I don't think it's a problem at all if, if somebody wants to talk to you about land use and about planning and zoning. But I think there's room for some nuance. And that nuance being if it's a pending application or an issue that's likely to come up, imminently likely to come before the board, I would use this suggested language that I've got on the screen. Otherwise, yeah, I mean, engage and educate.
Okay.
I know, I know that that's a, I did not give you a bright line just then, I know that.
I'm not really sure there is one in this particular situation, so if that's as good as it gets, that's as good as it gets.
Yeah, I mean, I think the best bright line that I can give you is that, I mean, if it is a pending application, like I said, or if it is something that you know is going to come up, geez, I know that the whatever lodge is going to have a pending CUP before the commission and it's just a matter of time, then we probably default to this language. Otherwise, I mean, I think it's, I think it's fine. I mean, I, I, if I were in your position, I'd want to know what the public has to say. That's, you know, you represent them. In land use matters. And I think kind of a rule of thumb, and we discussed this last year at our previous, but it's, if you were going to go to court and have your fate determined by a judge, what qualities and characteristics would you want that judge to have? Well, obviously if that judge has a pecuniary interest in your going to jail, you wouldn't want him or her making that decision. And even if it wasn't apparent that they had a conflict of interest, we wouldn't want a judge that, that shows bias. And I think, Tony, to your, one of your comments is. You know, certainly in the commission meetings, we want to avoid the idea that we've prejudged an application. Sure, we've, we've read the packet, we probably know where we want to come down, at least with our vote as we read the packets. But, but we don't display that we've prejudged and we're open to receiving new information and analysis at those meetings. And so, you know, we conduct ourselves in a way that's impartial and disinterested. I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about a recent meeting that I had with legal counsel for an applicant. And they, and, and this legal counsel was. What you guys get at your meetings and what we get on some of the phone calls sometimes are, are different behaviors. And this legal counsel said something to the effect of, you know, well, just have them deny it and so we can appeal it. And, and I responded, absolutely not. Our Board of Commissioners approaches every applicant an application in a fair, unbiased, tabula rasa matter. We consider every application on its merits. And I took a little bit of umbrage with the comment that your, your commission would have prejudged an application before it's presented to you. And I did that for two reasons. One, because I personally know that that's, I've, I've not ever seen that from any of you, not ever. Not ever, I've never had that conversation with any staff and I've never had that conversation with any of you, nor have I seen it in a meeting. And secondarily, that's not how we conduct business, that's not how I've seen you conduct business, that's not how you've been trained to conduct business. And so. You know, this being unbiased, I think it's, it really operates to our benefit and, and we do have a, a reputation that I feel very confident in defending. Any questions about any one of these three topics? Conflicts of interest, being unbiased, conducting ourselves in a way that's. Pardon me, unbiased, or what to do when we're approached in the grocery store by a well-meaning neighbor or applicant? Okay. Hearing none? Okay. And again, I can, it's really hard for me to read the room, so, you know, just stop me if I'm a freight train. So I do like this language, we've kind of covered that. Next, basics for quasi judicial actions, again, if you were in court with your fate, you know, if the sword of Damocles hanging over your head, what sort of proceeding would you like to have? And you would like a meeting, a proceeding that would be open and visible to your friends, neighbors, family, colleagues and the public. And that I think is what underscores the open meeting law in the state of Idaho, which you can find in Title 74 of the Idaho Code. And what that, the basic, basic principle is, we conduct the public's business in public. And. How do we do that? Well, first, there has to be a quorum if we're going to have a meeting, meaning we have to have a majority of the Commissioners present. We have to have proper notice of the meeting. And so there's, you know, essentially two gears or types of notice that we have. One is just the regular meeting notice that we have with the agendas and the notice postings that occur. And the second is the special publication and mailing notices that, that are required for certain kinds of public hearings. We're not allowed to have sequential meetings, meaning we don't, we don't set a topic, we don't set an issue to be, to occur. Over a course of meetings. The intention is, we make as much progress as we can at the given meeting, if we can make a decision, we do. And if, if not, then we continue the, the matter to, to, to a date certain. So we don't leave the meetings open. And then the meetings are open to the public, which you all are very well aware of. Any questions about open meeting law or that open meeting requirement? Okay, so I mentioned, go ahead.
It's a resounding no, sorry.
It's a resounding no.
Trying to give you some closed captions.
Very good. Again, excuse me. Public hearings are sort of that second gear and there's specific notice that's required. Typically Meredith will include a commentary on the notice that was, that was conducted and whether or not it was properly conducted in the packet so that you can review that. That meeting notice and is, should become a part of the record that we create of our decisions. And it should be something that we take notice of at the beginning of each public hearing. And so. I think that's one place where maybe we can tune up just a little bit, is that we take notice of what, what, or we take notice, I'm going to say the word notice a lot here, we take notice of what a public notice is required and include that specifically in our record for consideration. The next is. The purpose of a public hearing is that the individuals interested in a given application have the right to be heard. And we, you know, from, in the interest of moving our business along, we try to give people a time limit. And I think Robert does an excellent job of conducting the meetings in this way. And, you know, asking people maybe to wrap it up as we get closer to the end of two or three minutes. That said. We often give applicants far more than three minutes and certainly we give staff more than three minutes. And if an individual requests more time to present their intended input, we should be very gracious and granting that to them. That doesn't mean that we, there's no limit. And it doesn't mean that we can say, we'd like you to keep your comments to three minutes and then remind people when three minutes comes up. Most people who are well behaved and well mannered, you know, if we mentioned, hey, you've got three minutes and then when three minutes comes up, hey, your three minutes is up, most people will make an effort to wrap it up. And, and so, you know, I've, I know that there are situations where it's occurred where somebody just won't shut up. But it doesn't happen often and it doesn't happen, at least with this commission in my recent memory. Any questions about public hearings and how we conduct them and what they should look like and why?
So Bill, on the notice, I know Bob does a good job of asking Meredith if everything was noticed properly and published. Is there more than? Do you want more than that?
Well, so. Ideally, we would have a proof that the notice was properly given. And that is in the form of either an affidavit of publication and notice. Or like, or, or testimony that can be given at the meeting. And so. And so um. From, so look, this is, this is me being the lawyer that at some point may have to defend. Or I guess does have to defend some of the decisions that are made with your commission.
Um. Just had Meredith state where it was noticed. When I ask her if notices have been done properly, she can say it was done in the paper, it was noted. All, it was noticed wherever the notifications were, if she states at the beginning of the meeting. Here's where they were noticed, maybe the date.
At the beginning of the hearing, because for each hearing, the notice might be different. Um, and I mean, even if, I, I mean, I think there's room for efficiency here. I mean, Meredith can make a. Uh, notice report in the packet. She could point, point you to that.
If you read it. Yes, I can do that and then point to it at the beginning of every staff report, for example. Um, I do get those affidavits turned in in advance of the meeting, and then they have to turn in the actual physical copy. With wet ink, because that's how we keep records in the community. And then usually in the three or four days um, leading up to the meeting, sometimes I have to go on a public investigation spree because I'm getting competing. Stories about what day someone did something or what day a postmark was applied versus the date that is sworn to in an affidavit. Then I sometimes have to make uncomfortable phone calls where I say, it's not, it's not going to work. There's like, is there anything you can do? No. There's not, sorry, like, the number of days is the number of days. We're gonna have to try again. Moving on.
Yeah, well, and what the applicant should understand is that this is defending them. Because if they have a controversial decision that's made. Um, I can tell you, one of the easiest places to poke holes is, well, the procedure really notice wasn't properly given, and then it's bam, it's automatically. That gives the court a place where they can just send it right back. Uh, and start over, go back, go, you know, go pat, go back to go. Um, and the other comment that I would make on, on the, on Meredith's point is. It's not uncommon for notice to get messed up. I mean, it happens, Meredith, how often? At least once a month?
Almost every month, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So this is something where we should be on the lookout for, and as a commission, you want to assure yourself. That, you know, at the opening of a public hearing, that notice was properly given. Any other comments on public, on public hearing and notice?
Well, the only comment I, I would like to make is, sometimes I do talk to people in the grocery store or on the street, and they. Ask about an issue. And they say, well, I never heard anything about that. How come it didn't get to me, or, or what, where was the notice? Published, or what, how many times, or whatever. And I just tell them, I should call Meredith's city offices and get the information until you get it on the phone. It gets the information that you need.
Yeah, I don't know how much, yeah, Tony, I think you're right on. I don't know how much Meredith appreciates that, but, but I think you're right on. Uh, I do think that's the thing to do.
Well, the easy thing too, public hearing is noticed in the paper.
Hmm.
So, and most people don't read the paper, especially that portion of it, and it's very, very small. wording, so they have to look in the classifieds and find the small thing that continues from one page to page seven to. Wherever it jumped around to, but just, it's been in the paper.
But it was so important, so why wouldn't they expend a little bit of energy to try to find out from the source?
Exactly.
You know, I mean.
It's easy, it's just safe.
Yeah.
Always notice in the paper.
I didn't hear about that.
Well, and on the city website.
Yeah.
Hmm.
So I mean, if, if somebody has a real interest in land use. Uh, they should keep an eye on the city's website, because we publish all of our uh. All of our agendas and all of our packets. Okay. Yeah, uh, good comment. Um. So the next topic is a decision on the record, and we're really going to dive probably deeper than any of you ever really care to do. Um, into this particular topic as the second piece, but. Suffice it to say that we have to have a transcribable record, which means we have to have an audio recording. Um, and I, I think one of my, I don't know if it's a favorite thing to do, but one of the things that I, I do is I'll watch the transcription. That kind of, that cruises along, sometimes you can see it on the screen and the. Although the AI does a good job. It is by no means perfect or very correct, and so. It is imperative that we have an audio recorded. Record um of our public hearings and our deliberations and decisions. Um, the next is, individuals have to be identified. Uh, not so much the members of the, of the, the commission, you're identified when we open the meeting. But those who speak, and, and Robert does a very good job at this, asking people for their name and for their address uh when they're going to speak. Um. And then um. We want a record of all written materials, maps and exhibits, and that's our packet. That's why the packets are. Hundreds of pages long. It's because those are the things that, those written materials are what you consider. And all of this gets boiled down into what's called a reasoned statement. And we are going to, I'm not going to belabor that at this moment because I'm going to belabor it later. Um, but suffice it to say that the Supreme Court has got. A um, in their efforts to make it very straightforward and clear. They've uh created a very difficult. Maze to navigate on creating a defensible position. Um, and such that I would say any decision that either this commission or the city council makes. Um, is subject, no matter how hard we try, to being overturned on judicial review. That doesn't mean we don't try it, it doesn't mean we do our best. But just because of the nature of some of the law that we're going to talk about. Um. I, I'm, I. I'm not an optimist in this regard. Uh, any questions about have, making our decisions on the record? Or any of the other two topics on this, on the screen? Okay, that's another resounding no.
Can I, can I make a comment on that one?
Yeah, of course.
I think the, the one scenario I would point you to is if you hear testimony. And someone's making a claim, but you haven't seen that in your packet in, in a form of evidence. We want to get that thing in the record and, and part of the materials. And proven or reviewed by staff, like sometimes people will say, well, they have all this information, the staff has it. And sometimes I go, I've never seen anything resembling that in my life. I haven't said those words, but I have not received something like that. Or I have not reviewed it and admitted it to the record yet because it was received after three PM today.
Well, I was going to say, like. You, you got information, we all got information Tuesday night.
Hmm.
Um, that we had never seen, so.
Hmm.
And I think we did the right thing in saying we want more information, but. Is that right, Bill? Like. If we haven't seen it, then we can't make a decision on it.
Yeah. Yeah, I think uh. Asking for the information that you feel like you need to make your decision. And uh, is, is necessary, and, and in fact, in dramatic detail. I don't know about dramatic, but in great detail, we're going to talk about why today is the second half of what I'm uh getting into. Um, I know there's a lot of foreshadowing here. Any, any, any other, any other comments?
Yeah, I want to comment. Um, so, for example, this last. On Tuesday, we had a. In, on your part, sending us comments even a few minutes before the meeting. Um, that stuff is really hard as. Even for the public, if you even see stuff like that, I just wonder how. Do we, because we receive information at, at a certain point. That we say we have to continue because we've received this information. Even from the applicant's part where they submitted things last minute, where then the public couldn't really review and. Comment on it and it changes their mind, but it, it's kind of, almost wastes our time a little bit because we don't have the time to really. Look through and evaluate and make a good decision. Um, in their part of being hasty or being, or procrast, procrastinating or whatever it may be.
Hmm.
I don't know, yeah.
Yeah. I think that, like, this meeting space is a really good spot to, to put that out there, because, for example, the, the three PM on meeting day is just kind of the practice of the city. But for example, if you guys wanted to carve out. The first ten minutes after four thirty, when we're starting to read any public comments that have been received on the day of the meeting. And you'd like Rachel and I to get everything from twenty-four hours printed out, so you can have your ten minutes to be caught up on public comments. We can, we can adapt in that way. And if, for example. You know, I know in, in previous city planner tenures, they've cut off the packet to anything other than public comments seven days before the meeting. Period. Unless there's like a small change to a staff report or something that's considered an emergency, but my. Forewarning on my presentation is there is no such thing as a planning emergency. Um, we, that's a pretty common phrase out of planners. Um, so if it's something where you would like to see things frozen and communicated to applicants. That, nope, we need seven days, and if you're not ready, you can choose to not appear at the meeting, or you can go with what you've got, no new evidence. Those are, that's your packet, your meeting, your thing.
Oh, so, so I, I think either avenue is viable. I can tell you from, from an attorney's perspective. Um. My perspective is that, you know. We. I think we inform applicants that, hey, you know, the deadline is seven days before. And if you want to turn something in after that, it can be a part of the packet. But um, it's going to mean that the commission is very likely to say, we need more time to review this. Um, and what I mean by that is, so if, if, if we have a public hearing and somebody shows up with a. Stack of paperwork and they give everybody a copy and they, you know, walk through it in their presentation. I think Commissioner, to your point, it's, it's totally reasonable to say, hey, this is all new evidence that I'm seeing for the very first time today. And as a result, I'd like time to study it so I can make the right decision here. So I can give it the proper weight. And, and that's why we can continue a public hearing to the next meeting. And that's why we can table items and move them to another meeting. Um, I think, you know. Telling people like, no, you're cut off. Um, I don't want that to be misconstrued because, again, going back to some of these principles of. Um, you know, having a, a public hearing and an open meeting. It's that, you know, they should be able to put whatever. Relevant and appropriate facts. Before us as they want. We should be willing to accept that. That doesn't mean that we have to make a decision. Right when they, you know, they flop it in our lap and then we've got to digest it. Because that's not reasonable either. So, so I would suggest, I think Commissioner, you are right on target. And Meredith, I'm fine with having, you know, sort of a, 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 a soft cutoff for the packet of seven days. And then if you receive additional information, I think it comes with a caveat. Yeah, I can try to get this to the commissioners, but you have to understand that, you know, if it comes after these seven days. They're very likely not going to be able to make a decision at this meeting. So you need to make a decision about whether you want to submit additional information or not.
Yep.
Okay.
Morgan has her hand up. If you want to hear from Morgan, so.
Yeah, absolutely. I always want to hear from.
I just had like a general, I don't know if it's a question or a statement, but I know when things are submitted late also. I try to like differentiate on what materials my review is based off of. Um, because sometimes they're like, oh, we submitted this, and it's like, well, I've had no chance to review it, so my comments are all based off of. Like previous versions, is that the appropriate way to do that?
Yeah, and commissioners, I mean, this is good for us to have this meeting, because when you hear staff say certain things, it should be like, oh. I, I know what that means. And what it means is Morgan saying. Look, they, they may have given me what I'm looking for, but I didn't have a chance to look at it, and so. Um, you know, that, if you hear, especially the city engineer, saying, I haven't had a chance to review that, my, my opinions are not based on this. That should be the commission saying, well, we'd like to kick this to the next meeting so that our staff has an adequate opportunity to review it.
So instead of like, developers want to get back in front of us right away again, but, you know, they have. Architects and engineers that have workloads too. Do we? Move stuff out like two months instead of one month, so everybody has a chance to get this?
It's a, yeah, it's a workflow thing. Um. I don't have a lot of opinion on that because it's not right in my wheelhouse. Uh, Morgan and Meredith might have more of an opinion.
I think it, it's a, a judgment call for you guys. When, when we do the one month continuations, it means that they have exactly one week to get things to us. To be perfect, and then we have exactly one week to review it, to see if it was perfect and met the needs. Um. And sometimes it goes well and sometimes it doesn't.
Well, and my, my cynical brain just says, if you give them two months, it's still going to show up two weeks before the meeting anyway, right?
Um, we usually try to ask. Would you be prepared to have that, right, and ready to go by the next month?
You know.
Say yes, and they're like, okay, you've already. Pressed that you will have that done, and maybe that puts a little bit more sense of urgency.
And, and not picking out any particular applicant from any particular meeting, I'm not specifically referring to any specific applicant. But recently, we've had a whole slew of very, very pushy applicants that want everything done yesterday. And I think, you know. Just so the commission's aware, there's been conversations between Meredith and Michelle and myself. Um, and Brian before um, to the effect of, hey, look, we have. A, 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 a limited, finite amount of bandwidth. And just because somebody's going to miss, I mean, it may be that you miss your building season. And we can't help that. We work as hard and as fast as we can. But at the end of the day. You know, there's just one Meredith, and there's one Morgan, and there's one Bill Punkeny. And, and really, we are, you know, our P and Z commissioners are only going to meet for so many hours once a month. And, and so, you know, look, that's just, that's just the resources that we have to manage these things, and so if we have to push something out two months. It's just, it's not unreasonable, especially if we've got a good reason for it.
Uh, I have a question about that, uh, Bill. Um. The packets that we get, you know, every single month for the meeting, it's three hundred, four hundred, sometimes seven hundred. Yeah, big numbers. And I'm wondering if there's any way to. I mean, I like looking at the drawings and everything, but, you know, I, I almost feel like I've cheated myself if I haven't looked at everything. Specifically, to be able to make a good decision about any of these issues and, and, and building projects, so. Is there any way, and I'm just, this is just kind of spitballing here, that we could bring, bring the number of pages back or the amount of information that you have to have in there. To maybe a more workable situation. I know we got a month between meetings, but sometimes that's really kind of, that even stretches it.
So, so, I, I mean, Tony, I hear what you're saying, because. Being responsible for seven hundred pages in a week is a lot. Um, the flip side of it is, we're going to talk about this Veterans Park case. Um, and there was over a hundred thousand pages in that record. And. Right. That's exa- oh, just, just wait, we're going to have some fun with that. And so, um. Much fun as you can have with a hundred thousand pages of, of land use record. Um, but um. I've noticed that, and I don't know if it's in Meredith, you, I, you and I have not talked about this, so you can tell me if I, I've misunderstood, but. I have noticed that, that Meredith is making an effort to say, no, there's only a certain amount that we can do. Uh, at each Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, because. Um. One, it creates too, the, the record is too voluminous, we can't adequately manage it. Um. And two, there's only so much time that we want to spend on a Tuesday evening. Um, and I know Commissioner Lyons can think of a number of, of times, but like. Hey, when those meetings go to ten o'clock at night, that is an absolute grind, and I'm not convinced that you guys are able to. To function appropriately after four, five, four or five hours of a meeting. And so, Meredith, what are your thoughts on that?
Um, typically, when I see an agenda that I believe will become out of hand. Um. I usually, A, talk to Michelle, B, talk to um, Robert, C, talk to myself a lot. Um, and think about. What is? A, received first, so the rules within your bylaws and therefore the way that we receive applications is. Those that were submitted completely complete and easy. Remain on agendas, those that involve local housing get to remain on agendas, and then um, everything else is in the order it was received. Um, for any given planning and zoning agenda. As we get into summer, I think a lot of you are used to. At least once a summer, Meredith has to reach out to everyone and say, hey, can you pick a second meeting date for this month, because it is not going to be okay? You're not going to be okay, I'm not going to be okay. We just need to split it up because it's going to be a long one, or long two. Um, and sometimes by way of messing up public noticing or other miraculous intervention. Agendas will shorten themselves. agendas will shorten themselves coming up on the meeting. And other times, they will not. And it's good that we have the two meetings scheduled. But whenever I do that, it's in an effort to not be here past usually nine is my estimated horrible time period. But I prefer to get us out of here before eight. So that we have enough time to have rich discussion on all of the applications where needed. But also still have clear minds instead of feeling like decisions are driven by your desire to leave.
And o- on Tony's point with like the voluminous record, I think it's perfectly, so if we have one of these seven hundred page packets and you feel like sometime, I mean, a, a lot of the drawings you can whip through pretty quickly, but sometimes, sometimes not. And, and you feel like, hey, I just don't think I've had enough time to properly understand this. We can take the public testimony, we can hear the argument. But I think that's a situation where we'd want to continue the, continue the hearing or at least continue the deliberations to another time. So that you have an opportunity to properly review and understand the information that's been put in front of you.
So what I just heard you say is we don't have to continue the public hearing, we can just continue deliberations.
And, and that was a distinction that I made last night. Because we needed to continue the public hearing. And I think the motion was to continue just the design review and the scenic route. And I was like, yeah, also the public hearing. Because in that instance, we needed the public hearing to continue on because we were gonna take new information. And I was just listening for that. But you, you're right, you can, we can bifurcate those. If we've, if we have all the facts, right? We've got all the facts, there's no more evidence that we need, we don't have additional questions. We just need time to digest this thing. One hundred percent, we can, we can kick the deliberations to another meeting.
The other thing I was just gonna add, um, would be of me focusing your energies on the important stuff. So I think Meredith does a good job summarizing the project in the staff report. So you don't need to get into the hundred pages of stormwater analysis, Sam might, Sam won't. But most people probably aren't really needing to go that deep on it because you're gonna rely on your, your planner and your engineer to do that sort of technical analysis. So I think it's more reviewing the staff report, reviewing the plans, um, looking at their application. Um, and then obviously if there's findings and conclusions, reading those. And so just focusing on those pieces of the application. I know sometimes it just gets really detailed and you're, you're seeing every little bit of it. But I think gleaning the main information about the project is also helpful. If you're short on time, you don't want to read all the details or the seven hundred pages.
I don't understand it, even if I read it, I can read the license still. And you know, there was a couple of questions and when, I remember we had that dual thing where there was two pe- pieces of property being developed and there was a sidewalk down the middle and who's gonna blow the sidewalk? And, uh, well, well, maybe that's not a great example, but some of this can become a little tedious. And you look at the clock and you've been out for forty-five minutes and you still don't understand it. So, yeah, I mean, I know you do a great job of slimming things down now, but it's one of the things we farther we could go, so.
Maybe that's when, Tony, you pick up the phone and you call me and you say I'm in a crisis, can you help me?
Come on over.
Well, and, and again, uh, Tony, if you're feeling like overwhelmed by volume of information, you're probably not alone. And so I think it's, I think it's a perfectly reasonable comment, you know, in the deliberation phase to say, this is, this is too much for me to understand and properly ana- analyze today and before the meeting. I've got, I've got my hands on the record, I've listened to the testimony, but I need more time. And I think if any one of our commissioners says that, I mean, that's one that we follow that up with a motion to continue the matter to the next meeting, continue the deliberations.
That's good to know, Bill, because I've never thought about doing that. I always thought of, if I don't, if I don't have a grasp on this, then I'm sure everybody else does and I'm the only one. And so you, i- i- it's, it's hard to say, listen, I just don't understand this and, and we gotta put this off to some other. I, I wonder if the other commissioners are in the same boat. It sounds to me like they possibly could be. So, yeah, it's nice to know you can do that and I will in the future follow that path.
Okay. Well, this is why we're sharpening the saw. So any other comments, uh, before I kind of move forward?
Nope.
I just.
Yep.
Um, like I really appreciate Sam and Tom, like Tom's questions about stormwater runoff the other night were important to me. And Liz always says, um, some really good legal questions. So I appreciate you guys bringing that stuff up. Cause, yeah, I don't ever look at a stormwater report. Cause Morgan will tell me if there's anything wrong with it.
Okay, yeah, great, yeah, I agree. I, I think that this commission really does. You, I'm, I'm always really happy and impressed with the questions that are asked. Um, and I think, you know, by and large, they're, they're topical and relevant and important. And, uh, you, I mean, even if it's not, I, I think everybody needs to feel confident in making and asking those questions because again, to Tony, to the point that you and I were making, if, if you're asking the question, it's likely somebody else has that same question. So, um, we have to, so what we need on the record in terms of our deliberations is we need to resolve any disputed facts. So if one person is saying that it's a, a, a pit privy and the other one's saying that it's a septic system, we have to make it, and make a decision about what it is, right? We have to resolve those, those factual disputes. We also have to identify what law applies and how the facts apply to the law to, to arrive at our analysis. Where we say that it either does, you know, the applicant either does or does not meet the requirements of our code to move forward and be permitted. And then, and then we follow that up with the word because. And so, all of that then, it has to be, it, it's, it, the more you can give Meredith and I on the record, the better suited we are to write those findings and conclusions in a reasoned statement. So that it's something that is understandable, that reflects the will of the majority of your commission. And it's something that is defensible if we have to move forward with that. If we have to, if we decide that there are conditions of approval that are required, we have to connect, though, there has to be a nexus to some legitimate public interest. And it has to be a proportionate exaction or ask. So we have to be asking for something that's proportionate to the size of the project. So we can't be asking somebody building a cabin to build a new lane on the highway all the way down to banks. Um, because that's not proportionate, even though you could maybe tenuously say the nexus is you've got a car, don't you? And all of those decisions have to be fine, supported by written findings and conclusions. Is there a question? Okay. So, uh, moving forward, just kind of our public hearings, the two phases of the, of the public hearings on an application. Um, and we ran into this, uh, a little bit yesterday and but, but it's again, it's just a refresher. And I think Robert has done a really good job of running the meetings, um, in this regard. So first we have to understand what the facts are. And we don't, we garner those facts from the, uh, packet that's provided to us. We receive either the staff presentation or the applicant testimony first. It kind of doesn't matter which goes first. It's sort of dealer's choice. Um, but we receive those and, and that, that's the time for the commissioners to ask questions. And if you feel like, this is Tony, to your point, if you feel like you haven't had a chance to understand the written materials uh, well enough to ask the appropriate questions, that's a time we'd want to continue the public hearing because you're gonna want to read tho- those materials, take into account the testimony and then come back with questions. And so, so you can only do that in the public, in the public hearing, phase of the, of the, of the meeting. Um, and if you have, you, you can ask, you know, if the neighbor stands up and says, well, you know, hey, I, this is not what I've seen, I've seen X, Y and Z. You absolutely can ask on the public comments, you can ask those people questions too. Um, I think that the applicant should be given not unlimited, but an opportunity to rebut. And likewise, staff should be given an opportunity to respond to additional questions that may have arisen, uh, that they may have answers for. Once we've closed that public hearing portion of the application evaluation, we move into deliberations. And at that point, we close the public hearing and that's where the commissioners engage in discussion. Now, interestingly, and this happened last night, and again, I, 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 I want to be really careful about deliberating a specific application that's still pending. So, um, I'm gonna use as an example, but this is not in substance. Last, as happened last night, hey, is, as a part of our deliberations, we've kind of identified that maybe there's some more information we'd like to have. And so we can reopen that public hearing in that same meeting because it's already been noticed for that meeting. Um, and that's what we did is we reopened it and we continued it. Um, so that we can get more information because as part of our deliberations, we identify, hey, there's these questions we have and we want answers to. And you know, we want to give you an opportunity to do that. But, but if the public hearing is closed, again, you can reopen it, but that's not the time that we can ask questions to either the applicant, the public or the staff. Now, we can have procedural questions, for example, to me or to Meredith. And it, it, and that's just fine. Um, in terms of, well, you know, geez, I want to get a little more information on this, but the public hearing is closed, what do we do? Perfectly fine to ask us about that. And, and that's what I, that's why I attend these meetings. Um, because I'm not providing substantive facts or information on the application. I'm simply talk, talking to you and providing you advice about how you can move forward, uh, in, with your procedure to properly administrate and make a deci- a decision. And you know, at the end of the day, if we have no further questions and we, we feel like we, we are in a place where we can make that decision, then, and I, and I really like that, uh, you know, Brian before Meredith and Meredith now continues. That i- in the packet, there's some suggestion motions and decisions. And she goes, I think, to great lengths not to try to push the commission in any one specific direction with those. But, but just to provide you with some, some language that you can use so that you know what your options are on a given application. And once we've got that motion and it's seconded, you know, the chair can call the, call the question and we vote. And, um, ideally in those deliberations, we will identify, you know, the basis for the decision that we want to make. And that's where we want to engage in, you know, providing Meredith and myself with the information we need to start to create that reasoned statement in the findings and conclusions. And that's where, you know, I would like, and I often, and I often remind the commission, hey, if there's a set of criteria, I want you to go through each of them and say, the applicant either does or does not meet this criteria. And then I've highlighted and bolded because, because I need that to be said. And we'll see why in just a minute when we dive into this city of Boise case, but we need your analysis. So I just threw up here the design, design review criteria because they're frankly easier than the CUP criteria and some others we have to deal with. But, you know, the project is in general conformance with the comprehensive plan. And often Meredith will have an analysis on that and she'll include appropriate parts of the comp plan because, you know, I mean, when was the last time you all read the comprehensive plan?
When you go to sleep.
That's right, that's right. It's how we go, it's how we, it's how we deal with our insomnia. Meredith is really good at pointing out, okay, so here's, here's what we think the relevant portions are, but you should be familiar with that comprehensive plan. And we're gonna talk in greater detail in a few moments about comprehensive plans, but you should be familiar enough, at least with the relevant sections to say, the applicant does meet, is in conformance generally with the comprehensive plan because A, B, C and D. And the same thing, the, the project does not jeopardize the health and safety or welfare of the public. It either does or it does not because, and then what? And, and even if it's, you know, it does not, right? We agree, okay, they did, this is a box that we can check. We still need you to provide the why. Why does it not, why does it meet this because, and, 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 and here's the reason. Even if we're voting in favor of this one and the applicant does not jeopardize public health and safety, I can tell you that if there's any opposition to this and we don't properly, we don't properly provide a reasoned statement as to why this criteria is met, that's gonna be the angle the Supreme Court and clever attorneys on the, on the opposing side are going to take to send this back to us, to remand it back. And then we're gonna have to go through the whole process again. And that's, you know, and that's not good for a series of reasons. One, because we do want to get it right. There's a sense of pride there. But two, because it's just more admin time. It, it, um, it slows down projects, which, you know, we don't, but we're not in the same rush that the applicants are, but we also don't want to slow them down unnecessarily. We understand that real estate is an investment and we don't want to cost them money unnecessarily. And as a secondary matter, you know, our staff at the city of McCall has limited bandwidth. And if we can't get past this, we can't move to the next thing. And so, you know, having these come back is really a bad thing. And so we want to, um, you know, provide that reasoned statement that's as, that's as robust as we can make it. Any questions about what I've said so far before I dive into the Veterans Park case?
A comment, I really appreciated, uh, Meredith's adding these within your staff report for, especially for that one. And that's a really good things in reviewing that prior to our meeting. Um, to see, all right, this, this meet this criteria and what is justification for either way. So I really appreciate that. I'd love to continue that. I don't remember how big this CUP stuff is, if they're.
It's only twelve.
Was, but if that adds to the packet or whatever, it's, it's certainly nice to have that. Right by, close to where you have it, where we talk about our motions and decisions.
You like the one, um, I've started doing a section where I provide my commentary on each of the standards. And then like the next page, I provide just the standards so that you can clear your head of my thoughts. Mostly I do that so that I can provide the applicant and you insight on what I'm seeing. Being the direction, but that if there's, if there's pieces missing or if you disagree with me, please do it. And just bring that up during your deliberative process. Um, because I'm, I'm making my best guess on the tea leaves of all of you after four and a half years of knowing you. But sometimes I do get it wrong and I say that to applicants all the time. Like, I, I think this is what we're doing. I don't know until we get there. And then sometimes weird things happen.
Well, you're living in and breathing it every day, so I really appreciate your insight. I mean, it's usually not very far from proof either.
One, one thing to remember though, I mean, although I think we've got a really great staff and they do a really good job. The commission does not have to accept the city's analysis. I would give it a great deal of weight. But I think it still has, you know, weight that can be counterbalanced with other analysis and your own thoughts. And so, you know, and, and I don't think, I mean, you know, Meredith does her very best to do a good job in providing you an analysis of, you know, whether or not an applicant meets the applicant, meets the criteria of a, of a given application. But, you know, you can disagree. And, you know, she's human too, and she and I and others, sometimes we get it wrong. But, but, yeah, I mean, I think that, uh, I, I think it just needs to be said. So. Okay, any other questions? Go ahead.
Jump into it.
Can I ask a question about, maybe it's a little, maybe a little more detailed than procedure, but it has to do with uh, encumbering approvals with, with public improvements, things like that, right? So say, say hypothetically, there's a development that's going in. The road that's out in front of it is, is basically chunks of asphalt or whatever. And you know that the construction of that and the ultimate end use of that is gonna put additional burden on say a section of roadway and cause a dangerous situation or something like that. Is it within, is it within our purview to ask for or recommend public improvements? or recommend public improvements as a condition of approval? And I, I know there's a proportionate question there, but if it's a large enough development and you know, maybe there's a some line there, but that's, that's kind of the question. I mean, what kind of what kind of left do we have that one?
And this is why we have a Meredith and Morgan, because they will often have negotiated that with the applicants ideally before the meeting so that their recommendations are acceptable to the applicants. That's not always the case. And if that's not the case, then it is up to the commissioners to decide, okay, is this a reasonable ask? Is there some connection to the impact that this development, whatever it may be on city infrastructure? So with, we're talking about roads and streets. You know, what's the traffic impact? Number one. And is it proportionate? I mean, so if it's a, you know, a very small subdivision, or is it a thousand rooftops? And you know, I think each of those has a different impact and each of those has a different proportionality. And that's, there's this is something we've debated a lot amongst ourselves, amongst the city staff. Is how do you know what's proportionate? And the answer is you don't. And it's, it's a, you know, you, you, you ask for what you think the city needs. And in proportion to what the impact is going to be. And you know, sometimes they'll say yes, and sometimes they'll say no, and if, and maybe they want to fight it or maybe they don't. But ultimately that's for you guys to, to decide. And, and in the end, you know, if we do have an exaction, these are called exactions. A condition of approval and it requires some public infrastructure. You're going to see here that if we, in the city of Boise case, that you have to justify that. And so, you know, ideally you'll say, yeah, look, if you're going to put a subdivision here, you're going to have to rebuild the road because we can't have there, you know, as a part of your application, there was a traffic study and we can't have seven cars a minute on Diamond Street. Which, which has been described to me as a go trail.
Well, it's, it's interesting that proportionate question. I had a project in Tucson where this was a large development. It was a 400 acre development. And they, as a, as a condition of approval, they had us widen and signalize a six lane arterial in the city of Tucson, which was, you know, boom, here's a million dollars.
Or more, yeah.
And this was back in 2008. So it was, and so I kind of, I, I often wonder about that, you know. We were absorbed that as a condition, but then immediately went into a recession. But so just about some of the stuff that wants to go around here and in, in terms of you know, public, public welfare and its impact on the adjacent properties and all that kind of stuff, you know, how, is that something that we talk about in, in deliberation? To kind of see, I guess, to kind of come up with a consensus of what is proportionate or not?
I think it's kind of evolving at the moment too. When Michelle touches on like the impact fee study, in an ideal world, like our impact fees make it a lot easier to be able to navigate that where instead of haggling over lengths of sidewalk or amount of street to be reconstructed. Instead, there's just a per door, per roof deposit that goes into the fund for the city to actually do the work. Depending on what the thing is. Other times, like if I've included a condition of approval, it's very probable that Morgan, myself, the applicant, et cetera, have already looked at cost estimates and come to some kind of agreement that yes, this length of sidewalk or whatever improvement. A, makes sense to be required because it's required by code, or B, makes sense to be required because it serves the use in it. It feeds the beast or whatever you want to talk about. But then there's a third scenario where either I didn't drive out there and do a site visit, so I don't know that there's a giant pothole right in front of it. And the county didn't say something and it's a county road and nobody's asking for something, but you just drove through that pothole three days ago and I don't have a condition about the, the, the current condition of the road. You can bring that up and say, can you get more information from the applicant and the, the road department or whoever would, would care about that? Because the condition of the road directly adjacent to that is, is terrible. And I would say, oh, I didn't think about that. Yeah. And then that would be of course a reason to probably continue because I can't jump in the car, go drive out there, fix it today and figure out the answer. But I think that there's a lot of cases where I don't have infinite familiarity with every street and the condition of everything. And similarly, Morgan's been figuring out times, and I see your hand up. Where we're only starting to think about existing pavement or infrastructure health that's already been built as something that could be fixed in the redevelopment process. It's kind of a, a new theory in our area. So, Morgan.
Yeah, I think you did a good job kind of going through like the different options. I'll also say that in some of the larger projects, I've been putting a section at the beginning of my engineering report of like the applicant, just so you know, you haven't figured this out with staff. So these are kind of like at your risk of not having your proportionality stuff and your public improvements figured out prior to going through this entitlement process, because it might turn out more expensive than they, than they're planning on. But I know Meredith and I have, and Brian, we started looking at pre-application, applications for completeness and part of that, part of my review is what kind of impacts do you have? And do you need a traffic impact study, which is kind of the first step to that proportionality and what kind of impacts they'll have on that. More guidelines to come as soon as I get more time to finish them, but I think, yeah, it's one of those, this pick, this tricky topics, which kind of just falls under final engineering approval because then ultimately we need a development agreement. And then sometimes it's a cost sharing agreement if it's not proportional, but maybe the city has some funds to contribute to the entire improvement. And then that kind of gets, our goal is to have that kind of figured out before we go to city council to finalize agreements.
Yeah, the only thing I would add to this is, I mean, if there's a dispute between the applicant and the city about what the conditions and exactions should be and whether they're proportionate and whether there's a nexus. I mean, I think that that's where you should be asking lots of questions about why and asking the city staff about why. The flip side of that is if it appears that there is some consensus, there is a consensus. It, it's, and, and you think that it's enough. Or even if you think it's too much, especially if you think it's too much. Look, I'm not ever going to tell you not to express yourself, but you are blowing up a lot of negotiations that happened between the city and the applicant. And so if you think it's, if you think the, we should not be asking them to build a new, a turning lane and a, and a stop sign. That's just, that's, that's, that's way too much. And the applicant saying, yeah, okay, I'm okay with it. Just understand what you're doing there. You're, you're really blowing a lot, you're blowing up a lot of negotiations and a conversation that, that's occurred before the meeting. So that doesn't happen often. I can't even think that it's happened in the last couple of years, but it has happened. And I, I know that that can be really frustrating for everybody involved.
Yeah, if I could just add, I mean, I think these bigger projects, we meet pretty early on on sort of what's roughly proportional. And the nexus piece of it, and we meet with our legal team, we meet internally, we meet with our legal team. We review that. I mean, the applicant obviously wants to know what they're going to be required to do because it all comes down to money, right? And, and then ultimately we need to memorialize that in a development agreement. And so I'm glad Morgan brought that up, like, you know, a lot, in some cases. We have the opportunity for the private development, say they're already building a road and we have a substandard road that connects there. Maybe it's not roughly proportional to ask them to do that. But we can cost share and we can pay them back to do that work because it might be cheaper if they actually conduct that work as opposed to the city doing it. And so there's really a lot of negotiation that goes on. We, ultimately the goal of our staff is to bring you things that like the staff feels good about, that the public's getting a good deal and that the developer is willing to do. Every once in a while, we get a situation where we just can't get to an agreement. And then we have to air that dirty laundry like in front of the public. But I think that's the minority of cases that we've had some cases where a developer will say, we're just not willing to do that. And we'd like to talk to the commissioner, the council about that. But generally speaking, we really try to work hard to bring you something that there's a lot of back and forth that goes on. So there's a lot of negotiation that happens.
I would say that, that example project I was talking about, that those offsite improvements came with impact fee credits. Which is nice. That was kind of a negotiation that had happened. I don't know if we, well, so I have a question about proportionality in the First Street project. And if we can't talk about it, great.
Is it pending?
Yeah.
Then we probably shouldn't talk about it specifically. It's not agendized?
It's not agendized and it's not, it's like, it's in between iterations?
Yeah, you're about to come back to the commission.
Yeah, it's, if it's likely to come back. Commissioner, probably what I would suggest is that maybe you pigeonhole either Meredith or Morgan with your question outside of a, an agendized meeting. Or we can have an agenda item to discuss specifically that as a group.
That's fine.
Okay. Are we ready to move on or this has been a really great discussion. It's exactly what I wanted to happen. In previous years, I felt like I just sort of talked at everybody for 45 minutes. And this has been a really good discussion and I think it's more valuable. So any other questions or thoughts on this before I move to the city of Boise case?
You can press.
I'll proceed. All right. So the Veterans Park Neighborhood Association, Inc. versus the city of Boise. So what this case involved was the, I, either the relocation or the new location, additional location of the Interfaith Sanctuary Homeless Shelter from downtown Boise to a location in northwest Boise near the Veterans Park Neighborhood Association. And the reason that I'm bringing this up is because it's the most recent and most complete communication that we have from the courts about how we should be creating our reasoned statements and the level of detail that is required. And so I, we spent a lot of time previously talking about how we need you to go over every criteria and tell us why. It, it's, it either meets the criteria or it does not because. And then as a group, you discuss that and then, you know, even if you want to vote on each criteria, you can so that we know. So that we know what direction to take, our findings and conclusions that you'll ultimately adopt. And so in this case, I'll jump right to the, right to the chase. The city of Boise, which by just about every measure is at least 15 times the size of McCall in terms of its ability and staffing. There, this, the city attorney's office is larger than my law firm and I'm the largest law firm in Canyon County. It's not insignificant. And it's, they have, their planning staff, I mean, right now we have and, and I'm not diminishing, Meredith is terrific and she is a one woman army. But she is just one person and they have a planning staff that is many orders of magnitude, larger than our planning staff. And so I'm not saying higher quality. I'm just saying there's much, much more. And so in this case, the Supreme Court basically dunks on the city of Boise. I don't know how else to put it. And I've been watching a lot of basketball lately. And so it came out recently at the end of January. And as you might imagine, the Veterans Park Neighborhood Association did not want the homeless shelter moved next door to their neighborhood. It's, it's all of the things that you might imagine. They were worried about crime. They were worried about the impact on police and fire. They were worried about the impact on other, other public infrastructure and they were worried about property values. And if you've been to downtown Boise and you've taken that River Street exit and you've seen some of the things that go on at the Interfaith Sanctuary, I believe it's a lot of good. But it's not that it, but it doesn't come without a lot of externalities. There was a tent city for a while. There's frequently panhandlers on those, on those corners. And I see it in pretty regularly because it's between my house and, and the ski hill bogus basin. So I, we see it every weekend. So the what happened was the Planning and Zoning Commission, in the end, after significant deliberations, pardon me, denied the application. The applicant then appealed to the Boise City Council. And in the end, the Supreme Court remanded this back because it said that the Boise City Council did not issue adequate, an adequate reasoned statement and it didn't follow its own procedure, which was memorialized in, in the city's ordinances. So they didn't follow their own ordinances. So the Planning and Zoning Commission denied the application. And because of concerns about adverse impacts, lack of security and inability to identify conditions to mitigate those impacts. And so like I said, it, it went up to the city council. The city council held extensive hearings over five days in April of 22. So this is how long it took to run through this process. It's been three years now and it's just coming out of the Supreme Court and now they're starting back at square one. And this is what I was talking about. Why don't we want to be in the city of Boise shoes? This is why. It, it, it takes forever. There was testimony from stakeholders and, and extensive records. So the Boise City Council, as I said, ultimately reversed the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision. Grant, granting, and the city of council, the city council wanted to grant the CUP with a four to vote and issued a written statement on May 24th, 2022 outlining 30 conditions of approval. The, the city council air found that this Planning and Zoning Commission erred by not considering additional conditions for compliance. So they didn't, they didn't consider what the Interfaith Sanctuary might do to be able to mitigate some of the impacts of moving into the neighborhood. And so the Neighborhood Association requested reconsideration from the city council, which was denied. And so the Interfaith Sanctuary filed an unopposed petition to intervene in the Supreme Court. So now you had three parties in the Supreme Court. At, at the district court level, the district court upheld the city council's decision and the Veterans Park Neighborhoods, Neighbors Association appealed to the Supreme Court. So what are some of the standards that the Supreme Court applied? So the standards for judicial review under the LUPA essentially is, is that the, the court will decision, decide whether the decision was in excess of statutory authority. So does it exceed the city's authority to make the decision? Was it made upon unlawful procedure? So remember we talked about, is the notice right? And are you following the appellate procedure identified in your ordinances? And, and then finally they're going to evaluate whether or not your decision was supported by substantial evidence. And if not, was it arbitrary and capricious? That's their, their words, which you never want to have applied to you. What, or was it an arbitrary and capricious decision? So, and even if, so the rule is that, or the, the standard for review is even if it is arbitrary and capricious and doesn't follow your own standards and it's not made pursuant to a lawful standard, it also has to violate the appellate substantial rights, which typically, typically if it gets to the Supreme Court's level, somebody's been denied something and so typically it does. So the Local Land Use Planning Act or LUPA is what governs boards. It's, it's what requires governing boards to issue a written reasoned statement explaining their decisions, including the criteria, the contested facts and rationale. Including the criteria, the contested facts and rationale. The district court's role in reviewing the the land use decision is procedural and the Supreme Court. Does an independent review of the governing board's records. So the Supreme Court is ba has basically said they have the final say. Um in this case, the Supreme Court found that the city council did not adhere to the Boise City Code as written. And the city council conducted a de novo review rather than finding error on five specific grounds required by uh the um. Boise City ordinances. And so because they didn't follow their own procedure, that was one area that the court caused them to re um. Remand. But more importantly, so that is important. Don't get me wrong, but the most important piece is that. Lupa requires a decision maker to issue that reason statement uh explaining the decision, including contested facts. And the court emphasized that the reason statement must clearly resolve factual disputes. So that's maybe a place where we're a little bit weak. Um if there is a dispute about what uh what is. So um like I said, you know, the privy is either a pit toilet or it is a septic, right? There is either is sufficient snow storage or there is not. We have to resolve those disputes of fact. And you know, and and if we don't, that's a basis that the court could. Could remand it back to us that we have to resolve those. Um and we have to ident and when we do that, we have to identify the supporting evidence. And then and we also have to do the same thing for legal conclusions. We have to identify the standard. And then identify the evidence that supports the conclusion that either the standard is met or it is not. And the court found that the city council's reason statement in the Veteran Parks Neighborhoods Association case to be conclusory. They use that word a lot. And what is a conclusory statement? Well, if we go back. To some of these uh criteria that I put on here for design review. So if it um. If we were to say, okay, we're going to consider A, the project is in general conformance with the with the comprehensive plan. Yup. That's a conclusory statement. We need to say the project is or is not in general conformance of the comprehensive plan. Because the comprehensive plan says this. And we believe the applicant meets it because they do A, B, C, and D or does not. But we have to have that reason statement and an analysis on every point. Because if we don't, according to. Uh this case, the Supreme Court, in the end, we are at risk of being overturned. Um so uh the the court found that the city council did not do that. They were conclusory and inadequate. Failing to resolve the factual disputes and provide a clear rationale for its decision. So Lupa not only requires the city or county to establish express approval standards for CUPs. Whoa, okay, didn't blink out, but also requires the governing board to issue a written decision. That states the relevant facts, explains the rationales for the decision and identifies the nature of compliance or noncompliance with uh. Uh of the use with the express approval standards. Um. This requirement of meaningful. So why do we they require this? It's because they're going to review it. So the requirement of meaningful administrative standard serves important functions, including facilitating judicial review. Avoiding judicial usurpation of administrative functions and assuring a more careful administrative consideration. In other words, they need you to have a complete record and to provide them with a total analysis. Because they're going to look over your shoulder. And and that, of course, is in pursuit of avoiding judicial usurpation of your administrative functions. So help them. Review your decisions and not usurp your functions. By by enabling them to review everything that you do. So um you can see that I'm I'm a little bit jaded by this because I'm I'm just thinking about. Like administratively, what capacity do we have and can we ever meet these standards? And it feels like the court has created in their efforts to create. A a a set of rules that accounts for every situation. They've created an unworkable system for us that we an unworkable standard that we could never meet. So here's some quotes from the case. And I um I just and some of these are repetitive, but it's because, you know, looking at the case, which I have right here. Um the court, it seems like was just very repetitive. In their statements about what standard they want us to meet. So it says, a city cannot merely recite portions of the record rather than determining the facts disputed by the parties. We have to if there's a if there is some dispute of fact. I say it's one thing. Meredith says it's another and and that's a bad example because Meredith and I are probably not ever going to be in dispute like that. But the applicant says it's one thing and the neighborhood says it's another. We have to resolve that. And if we don't. On that basis alone, a reviewing court could send it back to us. A reason statement must plainly state the resolution of factual disputes, identify the evidence supporting that factual determination. And explain the basis for legal conclusions, including identification of the pertinent laws and or regulations upon which the legal conclusions rest. The decision maker must explain its decision, state the facts relied upon, explain the rationale and identify the relevant criteria. Um the the decision maker does not explicitly respond to factual legally. So when the decision maker does not explicitly respond to factual legal questions raised by the parties, the parties being. Anybody that provides testimony at the public hearing. And it manifestly fails to provide an explanation as to how the application complied with relevant ordinances. The written statement does not satisfy Lupa. Ergo, or read between the lines, that means the Supreme Court is going to send it back. Kind of it reminds me of a character on The Office. It was an insurance salesman. If it's overcooked, I send it back. If it's if it's undercooked, I send it back. If it's got cheese on it, I send it back. That's exactly what we're looking at here. Um. Simply put, this is their language. Simply put, so we're gonna we're gonna break it down for you. The statement makes the statement makes conclusions without sufficient explanation and does not. So this is them analyzing the city of Boise's. Uh findings and conclusions without sufficient explanation and does not adequately endeavor to resolve the intense dispute over whether the use will impact nearby properties. It lacks necessary factual support and does not explicitly respond to the factual and legal questions raised by the parties. That's the fourth time they've raised that point to us. I think there's a message here. However, the reason statement does not explain what these conditions entail or why they would eliminate any undue burden on public facilities. Similarly, merely stating that conditions also address transportation burdens is plainly insufficient. That's a conclusory statement. It this conclusion or this exaction meets our transportation burdens. Because and the city of Boise with its army of attorneys and planning staff can't manage to do it. But we have to. While the reason statement addresses some aspects of the CUP's compatibility with the comprehensive plan. So so there's one reason I keep going back to that that first condition on our design review is because it mentions the comprehensive plan. And so this is the rule that they've identified for comprehensive plans. So it says, um while the reason statement addresses some aspects of the CUP's compatibility with the comprehensive plan. It fails to address the CUP's apparent conflict with the plan, which requires that shelters. Like the one proposed by the Interfaith Sanctuary should exist downtown, not primarily in residential areas as in northwest Boise. So their comprehensive plan didn't say this is where you have to put your homeless shelters. They have to be downtown. But it didn't mention it in north in the portion addressing northwest Boise and it did in uh the the downtown area. And because they didn't say. Okay, and and what the Supreme Court says, and this is in the next quote, but I'll just paraphrase it. What they say is, well, you don't have to comply with your comprehensive plan, but if you're not going to, you gotta tell us why. And that's exactly what this says. It says, when a zoning ordinance requires conformity with a comprehensive plan, this court is held that only requires the project to generally comport. With the overall goals of the plan. However, the question is not whether the CUP actually complied with the plan. But rather whether the council adequately explained its apparent lack of compliance with the plan. Here, the reason statement does not address or even attempt to resolve the apparent conflict with the plan in any way, further demonstrating its inadequacy. Um I'm yelling. I think I'm animated because the Supreme the Supreme Court. Is really going out of its way to tell us how wrong the city of Boise was and they're making an example. Out of the city of Boise. Um they want embarrassment and 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 this is extremely strong language. Um so what do they want in their written statements? Um well, so the city of Boise did not provide a rationale for its approvals. This is like the fifth time that they've brought this up. The court even, okay, so here's where I was talking about proportionality of the record. So in another case, um the court. It uh the court discussed that there was a four thousand page record. And one and one half pages of reason statement and seven pages setting forth sixty four conditions, which they thought was inadequate. And they doubled down on that and they said, in this case, the court identifies that where there was approximately a hundred thousand page record. Which. Look, I can tell you, we have a lawsuit for the city of McCall where there is over fifty thousand pages. Nobody can manage that volume. Nobody. Um but they're saying. Where there's a hundred thousand page record with one and one half page reason statement and four pages setting forth conditions, it is inadequate. So where we have these voluminous records, it appears that the court is going to and we is going to look at. Our analysis and if we've only got a page and a half of analysis. On that basis alone, they might send it back to us as being inadequate. Um. I mean, I think what they're saying is there's no way you could you could pack in enough analysis in a page and a half if there's a hundred thousand page record. Maybe they're right, but at the end of the day, I mean, I think like it it makes people like me ask, well, okay, so I've got a. Thousand page record. How many pages of analysis do I have to give you? And it's like it's like asking your teacher when they ask you to write a report, how many words, how many paragraphs, how many pages? And she or he responds, well, just write until you you finished. Oh, okay. Um so um but I know three pages is not enough, right? Um. The work conclusive statements. Go ahead.
So in our example, we go through the twelve conditions of the CUP or ten, whatever it is, and we say. Yeah, we think it does. That's not enough.
Nope.
No way. That's what the city of Boise did. And like I said, the Supreme Court did the judicial equivalent of dunking on the city of Boise. Um here's so here's I mean, this is it, right? This is where like. You know, you're hanging off the rim. Okay. So it says, this is a whole section in the in the opinion and I've distilled it down to these three points. The court will not scour the record on appeal for evidence that may support the city council's implied findings and legal conclusions. Respondents would have this court sift through an administrative record of over a hundred thousand pages. They're really focused on the number of pages, searching. Somebody's law clerk got really sick. So anyway, um so the court should not have to sift through a hundred thousand pages, searching for substantial and competent evidence to support. The city council's decision. The reason statement here neither points to where such evidence might be found. Nor does it provide a reasoned explanation that provides the guidance necessary for this court to review the record and that is bad. As we have repeatedly held in the past, this is us swinging on like in danger of getting a technical because we're swinging on the rim. As we have repeatedly held in the past, we decline to dive into a sea of documents. In search of hidden pearls that might bolster a governing body's unsupported decision.
Did they?
They really wrote that.
Oh, yeah. No, that's in that's in the opinion. Um. So. I I get why you like I I'm a law geek, okay? And I get animated about this kind of thing. Um and you may not, but at the end of the day, it's all to illustrate my point. That going back to what we need in our reason statement, we've got to have discussion and. What Meredith and I end up having to write is is what we're going to be stuck with. And and it's going to get reviewed by the courts. It's I mean, it's a matter of time that we get sued over something like this. And it's not if it's when. And I have basically two reactions. The first is I'm no quitter. I never have been. And we're going to give it our best shot every single time. But if the city of Boise with all of its vast resources gets this from the Supreme Court. I can't tell you. I can't tell you that any given reason statement that I or Meredith write is going to pass judicial muster. And so we're just going to do our best to comply with all of this. All of this case law and all of this requirement from the Supreme Court. But we need your partnership in that and we need you. You know, at the end of the day, if somebody says, well, geez, Robert, why are you spending so much time on every single one? You can point at me and I'll point at the Supreme Court and say, because if we don't, this project goes nowhere for four years.
Okay. On that, so most recent example would be the design review and the CUP. Well, we actually didn't have a CUP, but both of them have. Those criteria items four, five, six, ten, whatever it is. So do we need now going forward, say, okay, here's item A, we feel it does apply and why? And B, it does not apply and why? The biggest thing is we have to go through every item each time and say why? Even if it's not, if it's something that nobody even comments about. It's a simple one. No, there's no conflict between the neighbors or anything.
The Supreme Court is very clear. We cannot have a conclusory statement. Now, I think there's varying degrees of risk, right? So if I'm building the greatest thing for the city of McCall that has ever been built and nobody is in opposition. And I'll let your imagination decide what that might be because I can't. Um, somebody is going to oppose it. Okay. Um. Even even if so, if I have that going on and there's no opposition whatsoever. Yeah, Meredith and I are going to spend a lot less time on our reason statement and findings and conclusions. Because there's just a lot less opportunity for friction. However. Where we have a scenario where we have legal counsel on that's been hired by the public. And or the developer is represented and we are not going to give them what they're asking for. Uh then we have to slow down and take our time because if we don't. We are at extreme risk of this coming back to us.
Yeah, yeah, but but build these. Between the CUP and the and the and the twelve steps and all this kind of I kind of think of that twelve steps is is alcoholism. It 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 goes and goes and I listen to, does it apply here? Does it not apply here? And I almost for a while look around the room to see if anybody can understand that or agree that it does or doesn't apply. I mean, just understanding uh the whether a certain thing implies with those steps is hard enough right there, but. I guess I don't I I guess I don't see what the Supreme Court's trying to get to other than it's just a bunch of windbag stuff.
Well, yeah, I mean, I might say it differently, but I but Tony, I agree. I agree with your general sentiment, which is which is. You know, how are we supposed to comply with this? It's it's so much. And you know, I think expressing that frustration is was one of my goals. The but the more important piece of it is, well, what are we going to do about it? And Tony, to your point, if something doesn't apply, so. I mean, here's the thing. I mean, usually usually our ordinances are are written in a way that these criteria are applicable. To an application. That that implicates them. What I mean is, um you know, if we're up for a design review, these six elements. In some way will apply to every one of them. Now, it may be, yeah, it's obvious that it's in general conformance with the comprehensive plan. And all I'm asking for, and Meredith may even be able to write it in the packet. Yes, I the city agrees this complies with the comprehensive plan and she'll say because. And and you guys can say, we agree with staff's recommendation that it does, right? And that's probably sufficient. Um. But if but in certain scenarios like but we need that because on every single one.
So what if four of us decide that it meets and three of us don't?
That's a majority.
Really, does that open us up? I mean, is that where an appeals lawyer can find the division to?
Not not. Okay, well, so to answer your question, number one. The major the majority's decision is what will be reviewed. So it's not like you will write a dissent like the like the US Supreme Court does. And so however, to your point, which I think is well well placed. If three of you are in disagreement with the other four. That's an indicator to the majority and to Meredith and I, whatever whatever we think. That we have to be. Very specific and very replete in our analysis. Especially on the points where our P and Z commission can't even agree. Especially on the points where our P and Z commission can't even agree, because if you remember. The city council and the P and Z commission were both divided on this application for, um. The interface sanctuary, um, and I don't remember specifically what the divide was because it's not totally germane, but.
He was.
But but the court mentioned it, right? Yeah, it's like four to two, right? So to your point. Um, if there is an area where even you can't agree. That means that the analysis needs to be airtight on the the majority's analysis needs to be airtight. On those topics, so, you know, Commissioner Rock thinks that it doesn't jeopardize the health, safety and welfare. And Commissioner Lyons and and three others think that it does. You know, guess what? I mean, Commissioner Rock is a pretty sharp cookie and she's probably got good reasons and we probably have to say, you know. It does jeopardize the health, safety and welfare because, and you might say that it doesn't because, but here's our response. And that's what the Supreme Court's talking about when we have to resolve those disputes.
Cloning Meredith.
Works for me.
Meredith AI. No, well, and that's the that's the frustration here is like. Okay, so for, it especially hits resort communities because we're small, but we've got a lot going on. Like, I mean, I think about the city of Cary, which my office also represents, it's small, but there's not a lot going on, but it's fine. But in McCall, we're small, but we've got a lot going on, and so. This kind of requirement from the Supreme Court puts an enormous amount of strain. On on city staff and 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 my office, I mean, we're. Look, I I'll be the first to tell you where we have limitations and if the city of Boise and and they legitimately have. I think twenty attorneys in their office, if they can't get it right. I mean, I think we're better than them, but I don't know if we're that good.
We're gonna try.
We'll soon see.
We're gonna try.
So to put it simply, it sounds like what we need to focus on is as we're reviewing criteria. You know, provide our assessment as well as the rationale behind it, the because statement. Uh, clearly identify factual discrepancies or disagreements and resolve them. And then you mentioned about legal disagreements that we need to resolve as well, that was one that I was.
That, yeah, Liz, I think, uh, was that Liz that said that?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, that would be the analysis on the criteria, so there's the factual disputes. And then the now the legal analysis is the application of the standard to the fact. In terms of like procedure, I mean. Uh, look, I don't I don't know who else on the call here, but I'm gonna say, I I will say, and and I think Meredith and Michelle know this, that there are. Certain weaknesses in our code. And that's one of the places the Supreme Court dunked on the city of Boise, which was, you can't even follow your own rules. Um, and so that would be the other area that we've got to be really careful is that we're following the proper rule. Where where you're the P and Z commission, that's most likely to come up. Um, either if we let like an improper notice, meeting notice skate, um, or. Uh, it would come up at the city council level because the city like the the appeal wasn't properly negotiated. To ask your question.
Yes, thank you.
Bill, when does this have to happen?
Now.
Right now, man, really? So Bill is a factual thing, um, and I don't know what our code is, but. Uh, Meredith says there's two hundred square feet of snow storage and the, um. Developer, commissioner says, no, we're counting our roof, so it's four hundred.
Yeah, and then we would go find the definition of snow storage as, uh. Does that satisfy the dispute, for example? Yeah. The code is quite clear what snow storage is, we're pretty, pretty good at that.
Longer.
Yeah.
He like would say, yeah, this either is or it is not.
Yeah.
That's no storage.
And like another example would be like if somebody from the public. States that they believe X component will generate exhaust or smell or a specific thing. And there's no evidence that it will or won't. We'll have to say, okay, we need some factual evidence relating to the generation of XYZ pollution or whatever. As a result of this thing, because otherwise we're just making conjecture.
Well, you might, well, well, and I would say, I mean, I think there's a way around that one. And I would say, what's what's your proof? And they would say, well, common sense that a pit privy is gonna stink, like, okay? And 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 I think, and I think this board can then exercise its discretion and say. Not not enough information, we're we're gonna need, we're gonna need more information or there's insufficient information for us to conclude. That a pit toilet stinks, or in the alternative, you can say, the board could say, yeah, we think it is gonna smell. And we're very concerned that the neighbors are gonna smell it, and so that impacts the health, safety, welfare and welfare of the public. Or have a substantial impact on adjacent properties. And and again, I'm not rehashing what happened last night, for God's sake. Um. It's it's just top of mind, right?
In general.
Last I checked, um, so I just wanted to point out, it's it's four o'clock and I know. I have some other things I need to get to, but I know I'm also on the agenda, um. So I wanted to check in with the commission and staff and Bill to see if. We feel like we covered this topic and if we're ready to move on or not.
I I just have one more question, is this a job for staff to find out if this smells or doesn't smell or? Does he have to bring that information if he's gonna make it a claim of gift?
You 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 could say, you could say, there's not enough information about the smell, we didn't, and so. So we don't think that's an impact that's gonna impact, you could also say, I want more information about this. Or you could say, based on the information I have, I think it is gonna create smell, or I don't think it's gonna create enough. Because it's seventy-five feet from the nearest property line.
It's like, straighten that out for me there, Bill, didn't you?
Well, you've got, my my point is you've got a lot of latitude.
Yeah, oh, okay, all right, that's what I was trying drawing to, if that's the case, okay, I understand it.
I think the answer is it depends.
Okay, we probably should.
I just love the idea that we might ask for a report to ask if somebody's. I wanna see that report. Sorry, sorry.
Mister Chairman.
I turned thirteen for a minute.
In the case of Michelle, if we need to switch an item on the agenda, if we, and if everybody's okay to stay for a little longer.
I've got time in this room, I I just added another hour on, I hope we're not here for another hour, but they won't pick us out at least, so. There's, that's good.
Michelle, what item?
Okay, I might just hit, um, so I think we're on agenda item number three now, which is the long range planning updates. And I can just briefly tell you what's happening, um, maybe Meredith wants to cover climate change at the end. Um, so first off, we are, um, under contract to do an impact fee study. Um, there's basically ten tasks within that scope of work. We're still on task one, which is a lot of, um, data gathering, so we still have quite a bit of work to do there, um. And so I anticipate my goal would be that the project concludes, um, just summer sometime. So it probably wouldn't be effective, um, until our next building season, or we would have to decide on when that becomes effective. Um, the process does include, um, basically a committee. So if anybody has any interest in in serving on that committee, just reach out to me, um, because we'll be putting that group of people together. Um, that represents different interests from the community, or if you have ideas of people that you think maybe. Should be on the committee, maybe there are people who you think might be in opposition to this. Um, it's good for us at the staff level to understand that. Um, so impact area is really kind of at the beginning phases, we're in data collection, um. The second one was the comprehensive plan update and design guidelines update. Um, initially, we actually planned on on looking at our design guidelines in advance of the comp plan. Um, and I think with everything going on and all the uncertainty around the impact area and a lot of other work that has kind of flown our way. And a reduction of staff, and we decided that we're gonna go ahead and roll the design guidelines. Um, process into the comp plan update process itself. And, um, what I think the design guidelines were first established in two thousand and six. Um, since that, a number of those have been codified into code, so we've created them kind of from a guideline to a standard. Um, but we need to go back through and revisit those guidelines. Um, I think one of the things that at least my goal in the comprehensive plan update is to use, there's some really cool immersive technology now. Um, that allows sort of citizens to get involved in planning where maybe that was intimidating in the past. So rather than doing a lot of two D stuff that people can't really get their heads around, it's more about. Standing in a room, looking at screens and being like, I like that, I don't like that, that feels like the right scale, that does not. Um, so I think there's some pretty cool technology that I think we'll try to incorporate into that process to try to engage more people. Um, especially as it relates to design guidelines, community character, those kinds of things, um, which takes me to number four.
Real quick on that.
Yeah.
I think we should keep in mind in view of the Supreme Court reasonings that they just give, but try to. Structure those design guidelines to maybe make it more cut and dry. And maybe not so, I mean, if if can, I mean, some of it maybe has to be vague, but if we can somehow. Simplify or condense or whatever they are, make it easier for us to justify. And the city council to justify, it would help.
Yeah, and that's a great, um, that's a great point, I think, um. There's always the spectrum of, is it a guideline and how subjective is it versus is it just a standard, like a development standard? And I think we tried to do that, we tried to pull out the ones that we felt like could easily be converted into standards. But that's why I think we need to update the guidelines themselves, and if they're actually become guidelines or standards, I think that's to be determined. But it really is trying to like capture the concepts about, um, how ultimately, when you're looking at projects. How are we getting the types of projects that the community wants to see? And, um, but that's a great point, I think, um, and like, there's obviously some things that are. That are a little bit more subjective and there's other things that are really easy to make standards, and then that's what we'll have to kind of weigh through when we go through that process. But, um, I appreciate that point. Um, the last number four on the agenda is I would just wanted to let everybody know, um, Monday is the meeting. And so going back to the comp plan, um, again, I think the scope of work in the area that we'll be looking at, we've always done long range planning. Um, with a few exceptions, like our climate action plan is city specific, even though we cover a greater area. Um, our transportation master plan is city specific, but obviously it ties into impact area and county stuff. Um, we've always, well, since at least I've been here, we've always done a McCall area comprehensive plan. So it's a city slash county plan, um, and that includes like our whole planning jurisdiction. Um, as you know, or may not know, Monday, um, March tenth, from three to five in this room. Is a joint meeting between the city council and the county commissioners to discuss the future of the impact area. Um, and for those of you that attended, there was a joint work session in September, um, at the conclusion of that meeting. Excuse me, um, there was, we thought, kind of an interest between the city and the county to continue to work together on. Coming up with, um, an impact area, both boundaries, um, and administration that meets. The, um, the changes in the state code. Um, since that time, we've learned kind of through other land use applications as well as private meetings with staff. Um, that the county is very interested in taking over the administration of the impact area. Dissolving this planning and zoning, the joint planning and zoning commission, um. And then ultimately, uh, getting rid of the zoning regulations and applying unincorporated Valley County codes to our McCall impact area. So that's a massive shift to what we've been doing for the last forty-seven years. Um, the city of McCall thought it was important for the public to understand that, um, this is a potential. Um, the way that the state code is written, it really puts the county in the driver's seat as it relates to the decision-making process. Um, and so the city did notify the public, people in the city limits as well as. The city limits was sort of on accident, but the impact area residents to let them know and try to get their opinions in advance. So we do have an opportunity for for the public and all of you to make comments on our city website. Um, and and that will be distributed to the city council and the county commissioners in advance of the meeting on Monday.
I couldn't find the twenty-seventh YouTube video.
Oh, um, it should be.
I think it's probably on the live stream record, so it shows up on a different list, but I'll send you the link to it.
Yeah, we can send you the link, great, thanks, Meredith. Um, and really, yeah, so really, it's, um, the meeting on Monday in this room is open to the public. But there's not an opportunity for public comment, it's really just an opportunity for the the city and the county to have a dialogue. Um, the city offered up the idea of a neutral, um, third party facilitator to the county. So that it wasn't the city running the meeting or the county running the meeting, they declined that offer. Um, and so, to be honest, I mean, other than. Yeah, we actually had reached out to Boise State University to see if we could get a like a neutral facilitator. Um, who could help develop the agenda jointly between the two entities and then facilitate the discussion. And, um, at their county commissioner meeting last Monday, they talked about it and said that they were not interested in that. And suggested that Sherry.
We can make public comment, just not live.
Correct, yeah, so you can make public comment in advance in writing, it's just not, there's just no like three minutes for the public. Um, so.
And it's due by five on Sunday.
Yeah, because and then the comments, they're they've been kind of dispersed as they come in in batches. But the ones that come in over the weekend, the deadline is, yeah, thanks for saying that on Sunday, because those will be distributed on Monday morning. So the sooner the better on that, tell people who you think might be interested or have a strong opinion on it. Um, let them know that this is really their opportunity to weigh in, um. What else am I missing about the impact area?
Are they all gonna be here?
Um, we're hoping so, yeah.
Not on, cuz, uh, yeah.
We're really hoping, we invited them to come in person, I know they have a regular meeting down in Cascade in the morning. And then they noticed it, um, for up here, like their agenda, so their agenda just came out during this meeting. And it just generally says a joint work session or whatever with city council.
You mentioned disbanding the planning and zoning.
Yeah, in in a basically a handout, like a work plan. Handout, we were that we received, that was one of the actions. They have the county commissioners commissioners, as far as we can tell, in a public meeting have never, um. Disclosed any of this information, it's just sort of what we've gotten at the staff level, um. And so hopefully, whatever their plans are, um, will come out on Monday so that we all know what. What is happening.
It would still be, there will be a city one, but it wouldn't be a joint city because during the impact zone, it would just be members. Within the city, with the city, and also it wouldn't just.
So I'm losing my job here possibly.
Possibly.
I'd be frank.
Yeah, there would still be a city planning and zoning, it just wouldn't be city.
It wouldn't include area of impact.
Yeah, we did, so it'd only be members that live within the city.
So it would be city members, so it would go to kind of like a probably a more traditional, um, planning and zoning commission where. It would just be city residents who just weigh in on city applications, right now, we have this joint commission. Um, which I think has worked really well, where you have city and county people weighing in on both city and county projects. Um, and then ultimately, right, like it goes to the, so in in the case of what they're, what we think they might be proposing. Or at least what we've seen at the staff level would be, um, basically anything in McCall impact area, if they decide to keep that boundary. Would would basically go to Valley County Planning and Zoning Commission. And then the county commissioners, and then they would just apply their Valley County code. Um, which is a very, very, very different code than the McCall area code for the county currently. Which is a very, very, very different code than the McCall area code for the county currently.
What would happen to the projects with lots of area?
So, yeah, so I mean, I mean, yeah, there's, right, and and then it's also kind of undoing the zoning that's been in place. For forty seven years as well.
I wonder what would happen with projects that are approved already in those areas.
Um, so I mean, generally speaking, the way it works is projects um, fall under the codes that are in place at the time of application. So I think there's a lot of things, if this were to happen, to think about like the rollout, you know, like how does that? We're about to go into a building season. Rachel just told me we just got ten building permits. About half of those are in the impact area. So I mean, projects are moving along with the assumptions under the current regulation. So. My assumption is that that some date in the future would have to be set for some kind of transition. There's a lot of work, obviously, associated with. Transitioning things as well, like we have to update codes and there's all, we have to find new commissioners and there's all kinds of things that would need to happen. Ultimately, I think it's really important for people to weigh in, um, whatever their feelings are about the process. I mean, typically, I think at the September meeting, the staff recommendation was really. We have a, we have a comprehensive plan that governs these two areas that had eighteen months of public involvement. And won a bunch of public involvement awards. So probably the more appropriate time to make any dramatic shifts would be. Re-engaging the public specifically through a process. That's comprehensive. I think right now, right, a lot of our impact area residents aren't here, quite honestly. So they might not be tracking, you know, what's happening. And because it's such a dramatic shift, it could truly change kind of things like some of the. Environmental protections like stormwater regulations, our scenic gateways and byways. Obviously signage, um, development standards setbacks. I mean, there's a whole slew of things that ultimately it would impact. And could really change the character like of our region. So I think, I think for just like letting people know that this is going on is important and then weighing in on the process. And then hopefully, if you're able to either listen in or attend, that would be great as well. You guys do actually all the hard, most of the hard work for the city council and the county commissioners. So I would hope that they're interested in hearing from all of you. As commissioners, like, you know, they are the final decision maker, but you spend meeting after meeting evaluating. These applications and providing really thoughtful recommendations. So I'm, I'm hoping that um, you have an opportunity to talk with all of them about your experience as well.
I think it's also an important question um, for Dana who had to leave us. But Tony and Tom, we don't know. What the planner, if there is a plan for representation of the impact area moving forward as whatever shape it takes. Or whoever's administering it. So. I think that you you three are uniquely poised to say like, I'm the one that lives here and does this. Am I gonna be providing my input to the county planning and zoning commission now? Like what's? What, how how do we remain involved, for example? Um, because I don't know that there's an answer to that question or or contemplation of it at this point. And it would, it would be a shame to see zero input from impact area residents on. Decisions going forward, so.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the letter that we sent out, I think there's been a lot of confusion about, cuz. The sort of the first part was sort of, here's what's happening with the impact area. And then the second part was, would you be interested in annexation into the city? Because part of the criteria for considering an impact area is potential annexation, and that's a voluntary process. So that's why we asked it. So I think people kind of jumped ahead to say, wait, the city wants to annex me and I don't want to be annexed. And that's really not what's being considered. I mean, that's a separate process from from how the impact area sort of is. What the boundaries are and how it's administered and what the regulations are in place.
So if if an individual wanted to be annexed into the, from the impact area into the city. And it's just like, say it's a like Warren Wagon Road, and there's property, people on property all down Warren Wagon Road, but some do you want to be annexed and some don't. How would that?
So I mean, annexation has to be contiguous, so you would have.
You'd have to get, they'd all have to.
Yeah.
Or you couldn't do it at all then.
Yeah.
Or or could be a forced situation.
Bill, it's pretty much a voluntary, it's so it's really not like a parcel by parcel decision. It's more of kind of like an area decision. Obviously, if you're directly adjacent, you can easily do it. But if you're a mile up the road or something, you would need to have that. Contiguous group of people who are also interested. Is there anything else?
Can't do.
Annexation.
Yeah, no spot annexations, no, no shoestring annexations. I mean, to the extent that's the question.
Yeah.
So if the county just does away with the area of impact and we're only at the city boundaries, then there's really no.
You you say builders, there's no spot annexation? Wh- what did you mean by that?
It's that's kind of a different issue, but it it's that like, you know, we can't annex little islands. Out that are not contiguous with the city. It's similar to what Michelle was saying. And then shoestring annexations is like, well, we annex. You know, up the road and then Tony's house, right? So there's like a string, like it's just a very narrow strip that goes all the way out there to and then gets to your house. To to your point, um, yeah, I mean, I think it is gonna limit the city's ability. I mean, at the end of the day, what it's gonna be is that. Only when a developer wants to, wants to do a more intensive subdivision. Um, are we gonna see annexations into the city of McCall? Like, they're gonna have to come, like, come and ask. So like, our ability to to incentivize that in the area of city impact is will be completely gone if we have no area of city impact.
Or predict it.
Or predict it, plan for it, yeah.
And I think, right, some of the concerns around this is like, for example. I think, you know, some of the storage project, projects have highlighted this is where people live in residentially zoned. Areas and they're starting to see more like this light industrial. I guess it's a little bit commercial, but mostly sort of industrial type of. Buildings and development occurring and sort of encroaching closer to those neighborhoods. And so that's like, that's one of the. Reasons why there is zoning, right, is to sort of protect your property, right? Like you made an investment in an area. Because you anticipated to have residential neighborhoods, neighbors as opposed to commercial, for example. I also think it it, you know, it has the potential of really changing like the gateway of McCall as you're entering McCall. You know, like, if you kind of think about other communities, I think McCall has been very intentional about the vision. And has asked the public, what do you, what's your vision? And then try to apply the tools to make that vision become a reality. So McCall looks very different than the other communities like Donley or Cascade, for example, and that's not an accident, right? That's a very like intentional regulatory environment. And so like, you know, you can imagine like billboards and things like that. That may not be consistent with what people expect with the McCall area or what they have experienced to date. So, so I think that's where. That's where like this is right, it impacts sort of our economy, it impacts our property values, it impacts. Potentially drinking water, yeah. Um, so we were, we're obviously very concerned about upland development. So that's why we have the shoreline environment zone, for example. And so, so these are things that all could dramatically change if there was a change in sort of administration and regulation and zoning and all of those things. So a very dramatic, I think, shift in in like how we've operated for a very long time.
County as of now doesn't have really any zoning. There is no commercial zone. Residential zone, I mean, they just kind of go through the areas, almost everything's conditional use permit. And they have values that they assign, how compatible it is. But, so there is no set zoning. So you go from now where we do have the zone from the outside, you know, impact zone has the density zoning around it, whether it's commercial or whatever it is. To if not.
So yeah. Do we have any insight into like the county's reasoning for such a dramatic shift?
Um, we don't. And so I think that ultimately um, will probably be part of the discussion on Monday, I'm guessing, is. Why, why such a, like, what's the problem? What what are we trying to fix? Why such a dramatic change? Because the state. The state statutes don't necessarily. Mandate this sort of dramatic shift.
So it's. It's hard for me to like even wrap my head around it without understanding like their motivation, so.
Yeah, and I think that's a good point, Liz, cuz I think that's where there's been a lot of confusion at the staff level is like. Quite honestly, we haven't received anything from the county to say, here, we're getting complaints from property owners. We haven't, we've had, um, you know, very few, we've had a couple of appeals, not anything major. We've never like received anything from the county that said, hey, we're uncomfortable with these regulations. Let's have a work session and talk about. How we might change them. So, so it's kind of going from we thought everything was working generally, you know, of course, there's always gonna be sticking points on policies. And quite honestly, like over the last twenty years, I think, you know, we've always, when we're doing policy changes. We meet with the county in advance. And we of often temper the policy so that we feel like both jurisdictions would be comfortable with it. And so, um, so, yeah, I mean, I think there's like, looking back now, I'm starting to realize maybe there was like indicators of. Of the county commissioners not being comfortable with everything, but we really have never like formally received anything. To say, hey, this isn't working, or we're thinking about changing this, or. You know, we're considering exploring whatever. And so, so that's why like this is. You know, a bit surprising to go from, yes, we want to work with you, city, on making sure we meet the state statute. To. You know, potentially like we're, we have a whole different way of doing things moving forward. One of the reasons, um, I did ask Commissioner Mopin in a meeting, like, you know. Why, why one code? Because like, for example. You know, we're ve- very specifically, our code is created around trying to like meet our policy goals. And um, a one-size code doesn't necessarily result in that. So I asked why a one-size-fits-all code for all of unincorporated Valley County and all of the impact areas. Because she mentioned that was one of their goals. And she mentioned that it's just difficult to work with two different codes. But um, but I mean, we've been doing it for a long time and it and it and it's worked. And that's why we have a separate planning and zoning commission, right? Like that, you're all familiar with the McCall area codes, which are both city and county codes. And that's why it doesn't go to Valley County Planning and Zoning Commission. So. So I mean, other than that. And I've also heard, I guess, in the same meeting, that maybe there's people in the impact area who don't want to be in the impact area. But we've never had discussions, well, are there parts of the impact area that shouldn't be in the impact area? And do we just need to change boundaries or modify boundaries? Again, these are not like discussions that um, have been had publicly. Nor were we familiar until sort of more recently where we were kind of brought this information at the staff level. So um, this is why the city council requested this meeting. And um, because it's important for this to happen in a public forum.
City council is aware of staff's concerns.
Yeah, they they're, they've received the information that we received. In terms of kind of what the county's work plan, if it's been formalized or not, we we're not able to find any record of it in a public meeting. So again, like, it it could, it could have been one person's idea. We won't really know, I think, until Monday, for sure.
Well, just kind of a commentary, it's interesting that. We have this training, uh, you know, how the city of Boise. Didn't cross their Ts and dot their Is. And so having standards and a formalized process. To end zoning. Really helps to make good decisions. But then things have happened in the county that are just. On a limb type thing, and I just wonder why the county hasn't had more problems with. Some of those things where it doesn't seem like there's good rational justification. And now, continuing forward. Just by observation, I guess, is. A little bit of frustration on that side of things. There's a lot of power and control, it feels like at that level. And. Uh, I don't know that there's a lot of, we're not holding them to that or, or I don't know, I don't, I don't know what that is. And I don't know how, how county government operates and. But anyway, oh, Bill.
Yeah, not to be too glib, but I think the dog's about to catch the bus.
Okay.
I mean, one, one thing I will say is that, you know, in being an administrator of the impact area for the last twenty years. Generally speaking, the majority or a lot of our impact area. Is highly educated, either attorneys or have their own attorneys on speed dial. So it's a def- it's definitely a different population than I think they're typically used to working with. So I, I can only imagine like what's gonna happen in the future if they're not following process or they're not following their own standards.
And you say there, there's been no animosity between the county and the city about way that things are going and the. And the processes and the, all that other kind of steps, it all just kind of came out of nowhere. Or or maybe that's not your evaluation.
Yeah.
So but i- is, there's nothing that that really teed this off to say, we we're gonna do all these things, but we don't, we can't tell you why, or we don't. Really have a a set plan or anything like that. We're just gonna come out and do them then, is.
Yeah.
Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, I mean, wait, we don't have anything like formal that, I mean, like in look, in just me personally looking back at it. I mean, I'm gonna blame it on COVID, because I feel like at that point, we stopped having in-person meetings and we were doing regular. We were doing regular city-county meetings together and things. And it could have just been like a change of, I don't know, like leadership personalities, I don't know, but. In looking back now, when I think about some of the things like the twenty twenty-two um, tenure impact area review. You might have remembered some of those meetings, they said were like unwilling to adopt new ordinances at the time. And then there was always this conversation of, well, the state law might be changing, and so we're not gonna do anything dramatic. And so looking back now, I, I think maybe this has been something that's been bullying over time. It's just not something that like anybody has come out and said, we're unhappy with the way this is going or we don't agree with this. So for me, it's, you know, I think it's, it's a bit surprising because it's such a dramatic shift. And again, I'm kind of like, well, what's broken? What are we trying to fix?
Yeah.
Because generally speaking, right, the majority of the applications that come through the process get approved. There's very few that are appealed. You know, people go through the process, they may like it or not like it, but they get their approvals in the end. And again, if there was something specific, like the process is too long or there's too many standards. I mean, we just haven't ever gotten that feedback. So, so that's. Like formally from, from the county. So, so I think that's that, to me, that would be an interim step to saying, okay, we're just gonna. Like take it over and do away with every, like, a lot, I'm gonna just say too, like, it's existed for forty seven years. But in the last twenty years, like the city of McCall has made a lot of financial investment in the planning that occurs in the McCall impact area. So all of the planning has been funded through the city. And so. So really, like, when you think about it, because it's in the city's best interest, because it's the area around the city and ultimately. It's the area where the city intends to grow. And I also will say, like, you know, it's, it's, we're one of two counties in the state that, that our county does not have zoning. So that dramatically changes like how land use happens out in unincorporated Valley County. And the impact area really hasn't changed dramatically since it was first established. And and so, so anyway, yeah, so I think, like I said, I think this is just. Um, and, and so, so anyway, yeah, so I think, like I said, I think this is just, um, an interesting time, like, we'll have to see what happens.
It seems like there's more of an ideological bent towards letting the property owner do what they want to do regardless of, of any kind of zoning that might be there, is kind of what it felt like. So I've, I've heard them make that statement in their meeting. So it's just kind of an ideological thing that they're working off of that's, you know, hey, if we can get rid of the city's rules and encumbrance and, and then we can decide. But meanwhile, with no zoning, it's kind of a rudderless program that they have. I, I do know that they have their planning zoning commission, uh, the county does, and but ultimately, it's rolls up to three people. If you want storage units near McCall or a brothel or what have you. It's gonna be on a one-by, uh, a case-by-case basis.
It's a reactionary approach.
But this, they do have, I mean, there are guidelines, like, they want to have, well, they have guidelines and then they just don't follow them, I guess. Things like 200 house developments. On that, right?
Yeah, I mean, I will say like, you know, if you look at their comprehensive plan, it seems like it's the same plan that just gets updated. Um, there isn't really, like, other than going to planning and zoning, there isn't like a robust public involvement process. So, um, so like, in looking at the county, they generally really don't do long-range planning. So they're not doing master plans to sort of say, what is the area gonna look like? How is it gonna work? Are we planning for infrastructure and that sort of thing? I mean, generally speaking, counties, uh, should be directing growth towards the cities where there's infrastructure. Um, and then, a, and they really haven't done that. And, and they also don't have any zoning, right? So everything's, uh, done by through a conditional use permit process. Um, and so I think you start getting these development patterns that in some cases don't even make financial sense. Um, so it's a very reactionary approach, but I'll, I'll, I'll just agree with Tom, like, we've, yeah, I, at the meetings, we've heard, staff has heard the county commissioners say over and over, but we believe in property rights. Um, so I do think there's a philosophical difference that they hold that one person's property right above everybody else's. Like, so that's just a philosophical difference. Um, but I think what's more important to me, it doesn't matter what your philosophy is, it's about how does it impact the residents that live there and the overall community, um, at large? Because, you know, there's a lot of important things like drinking water. Um, you know, the design of our community and a, a lot of these other things that play into who we are, how we make money, um, how we, why people want to live here, that sort of thing, right? Where our development goes, where do we have commercial development? Where do we have industrial development? All of kind of the basics, like the one-on-ones of planning, I think, or potentially could be thrown out the window. But I think that's why it's important for citizens to speak up about their feelings about it.
Well, given the authority, they'll, they'll take that, you know, they've give the power and take that power where you can, can get it.
Is there anything we jumped over that you wanted to?
Um, I mean, the last item on your agenda was, um, a few slides that are in your little packets that have been emailed and printed out for those of you in the room. Um, we, we can certainly continue on if we wish, but, um, I think that this, this section is a little bit more helpful, is like reading material relating to, um, just using your discretion on subjective things as commissioners. So I provided a couple of examples of fairly subjective code sections. One was a theme from last year's training when we would talk about like harmony with neighborhoods. Um, and then I included, uh, one of the PUD standards that we've struggled with, with, um, PUDs for the last year or so, related to, um, granting code variations, um, based on amenities and design. And like, well, how do I, how do I be the judge of that compared to what, like, what, what are we talking about here? Um, and I tried to break it down into different components of, the first place that I go if I'm confused is the purpose of a code section. So I even did that on Tuesday where we have very limited scenic route criteria. Well, let's go find out what the purpose of the scenic route is within code. That wasn't super helpful. So then we go over to the comp plan and figure out what the vision for scenic routes might be. And you, you go on this train of trying to figure out what history wants from us, um, or what the community wants from us. Um, and then you think, what does the neighborhood want from me? Um, and what do I see making sense? And it, it can be a different line of reasoning for each person than as, as Bill instructed us. Um, we need to explain our because, um, a, a bit more thoroughly these days. And, and I need to provide you more tools to do that as well. Um, but I think especially when we're thinking of these discretionary things, it's important to, to think like, what is our vision and our goals? And yes, that may be changing starting next week. Um, but we have all these really, really well manufactured documents that, that the community has gone out of their way to give us guidance on, and sometimes we just have to dig a little deeper. Um, and I think the one suggestion I'd give you in, in reviewing these pages in greater depth, um, is probably thinking of, are we challenging applicants enough to explain how they fit into our community's visions and these more subjective things? I find in my reviews that the thing applicants provide the least of is why McCall? Why, why, why here? Why this? Why now? How does this fit into anything we've called for? Do your effort, write your five paragraph essay, explain to me how you fit in more than just the setbacks and the standards, because I've been doing a lot of that work for applicants. Because, yeah, planning is hard. But I think that there is a component that's missing when we're seeing some of these projects where we don't understand how it fits into the overall community character that we know quite well. Like, where does, where is this called for? Can you explain this? Because they should have to defend that position, not me. That's why sometimes I say, eh? 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 That's not my job. Um, so we can dig into it if you want. And then I put two slides about where the climate action plan is in its process. We're gonna be doing a spring and summer of public involvement. Um, there'll be like EV test driving day, um, leading into the Arbor Day weekend, um, fun stuff like that. So if you want to test drive electric vehicles, keep in touch with me about that. We'll be getting ribbons, we'll be getting gem carts for like utility purposes. We'll be getting, I think Tesla might make an appearance, um, Milwaukee and Steel Electric Tools, so there'll be an electric chainsaw to test, um, all kinds of different objects so that we can start reducing the amount of exhaust and fumes that are belaboring the community and the atmosphere.
Tesla's not putting in the charging.
They are, they're just not eight, they're four.
We negotiated eight, eight chargers, it'll be eight, or sorry, it'll be four.
What's the one behind Mayor Hargreaves?
Yeah. But the direction the climate action plan would end up going, um, with this group is likely, um, A, presentation of the plan as we get closer to having strategies. And then B, there will probably be a large code amendment or incentive program relating figuring out ways to incentivize higher quality, better insulated, higher efficiency development, um, through planning and zoning, um, in whatever form that takes, as well as speaking better to renewable energy technology, because our code remains fairly silent to things like solar panels and EV chargers and things like that. Um, and the technology exists, and we're always going to be behind reality with codes. But it's important when it's time to play catch-up to do that and have a definition for a thing before somebody else defines it for us.
Can I make a comment? I really like what you said about the why. And can we make that as a standing question to the applicant?
You can ask them.
Tell me your vision, tell me why, because I would like to hear from them, frankly, instead of us trying to.
But I think that would be interesting too, yeah.
And the, can we use that as like a criterion? No, there's not a lot of like, do you like why? No, that's not on our list. But I think it's, it's nice to get that on the record and, and hear from people like, why? Especially on some of the ones where you're like, no, really, why? It could also probably give you some guidance on like recommended design changes, for example, like if their why is because I do love McCall, you say, well, I'd be, I'd feel better about this if you did this. And can be more conversational that way. But I think especially the ones where we're talking about the comprehensive plan and specific goals and standards and visions and this and that and the other real is, and especially unconditional use permits for things where they need to provide a comprehensive plan narrative. I would love if you got philosophical about it, because I have not been impressed.
I, I just want to spend it here, it's not good enough.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Kumbaya.
Yeah. Why not? Bill, don't tell me not, I don't need any more glibness today.
Yeah, sorry to be a buzzkill.
I'm, I'm all out of glib. I've used it all up.
Tell us about the truck and the dog again, would you?
All right, with that over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any other items that anybody has any questions on while we have Bill and staff here at the forum? Any questions?
Will we have, after Monday's meeting, will we have a new area of impact discussion? We could play it as part of it in here, and then you guys have decided to wait.
Yeah.
Oh, um, in terms of number four?
Uh, I think maybe in next, April's meeting, maybe just at the end of the agenda, have an update on what happens tomorrow. If you're not able to make it, or if anything comes up just like next meeting, or to say, there's what was said and nothing's accomplished yet. Or just kind of a status of that, I would say.
Yep.
I mean, so if, if it were to change, there's basically like 30-day notification process from the county to the city. Um, but there's a number of things that we need to be in place. Obviously, um, if it does end up changing, I think, again, the recommendation would be, let's wait through this building season, because we're gonna have so many projects that are big quarters. Um, that I think would be really confusing for, on general, and maybe started in the fall in a new fiscal year and a new, um, and a building season itself, so, um, yeah, I mean, things, things are starting to happen already. So people hear birds and permits start coming. And also just thinking about how we, you know, how would we, um, kind of finish out these projects. Pending course, we have projects that are, are at all different stages.
There is not any other questions? We'll let Tony?
I make a motion for adjournment for 4:45, long meeting.
Motion, second, all in favor, do adjourn. Any votes? No, we are adjourned.
I still have a few.
Get that for you tonight, Tony.
Thank you. Thanks, Bill.
Whoever got those Pringles.